Let me apologize for our much longer than 10-minute break. I want to again thank you for your patience. We will try to move along with the rest of the agenda, but first we need to call the regular session back into order, so could I have a motion, please?
I motion that the regular session of the Regional School Committee be put back to order.
Second.
Second.
And roll call?
Brian, aye.
Baptiste, aye.
Bud, aye.
Fonch, aye.
Opie, aye.
Thank you. We are back in session. We have -- oh, I'm sorry.
And I'd like to call the Amherst School Committee meeting back to session. Could I have a motion?
I move to call the Amherst School Committee back into session.
Second.
Brian, aye.
Bud, aye.
Shabazz, aye.
Opie, aye. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Can I just call the Pelham meeting into session?
Sure.
I'd like to call the Pelham School Committee meeting into session on October 9, 2012, at 6:30 PM.
Second.
Okay.
Okay. The very first item on the agenda is the Agenda Review, and as has been our custom for the last several meetings, I'm going to ask actually a couple of things of the members of the committee, just bear with us for a few minutes while we deal with sort of the logistics. Number one, we don't have that many items, but the items that we do have on the agenda, as you can see, encompass a great deal of time, so I do want to ask the committee if they want to make any adjustments in the time allotted. Secondly, as a response to what was an unfortunate situation at our last meeting, and really truly regrettable, I would also like to propose to the committee at this time that at the conclusion of Michael's presentation on the District and School Improvement Plans, that the process or protocol that we follow would be that everyone would have an opportunity on the committee to pose a question, pose a follow-up, and then make a comment, and then we would move on to the next person who has a question until everyone has had an opportunity to go once, and then, once that cycle has completed, we would sort of throw it open to anyone who wants to speak. So I'm going to ask the committee if you have, first of all, any objections or any changes you wish to make in the time allotted to the items on the agenda first. Not hearing any. Let me move to the second question, then. Is that protocol clear to people? Does anyone wish to make suggestions for alternative approach to the protocol immediately after Michael's presentation? Trevor?
I just have a question. Can you describe in time allotted per person? Could you defer time to somebody else if you don't have a question? Or anything to say?
I don't see why not.
Okay.
But I do want to make sure everyone -- this is very important items here. I want to make sure everyone who wishes to ask questions has an opportunity to do so at least once before we go back through the list again.
All right.
Okay? Any other comments on the protocol? Maria?
I just wanted to mention that it might make sense, given that we have staff here, if you would entertain putting superintendent's updates at the end and we go through the plan first and that way people can go home.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. Announcements also? Want to move to the end?
I mean, I would like that if people don't mind, because that way I can start.
Is there anyone there who wishes to offer a public comment unrelated to the items on the agenda? Not seeing any. Then I'm going to ask Michael to step forward.
He's going to come up and --
Come up and begin the presentation on the 2012, 2013 District and School Improvement Plans. Michael?
I'm sorry, but Mike is helping with technology. Okay, so actually, we're very, very pleased tonight that, for the first time, we have the District Improvement Plan and the School Improvement Plans presented together. This really helps us to illustrate how a cohesive plan is essential to move a system forward. So I'd like to begin by framing how we entered into creating a tight coherent strategy, and after that introduction, I'd like to ask the district directors and the principals to speak to some of the specific goals from their world, as well as to take the district goals right to the School Improvement Plan goals, and illustrate how that plays out at the school level, and make the connections to what happens with teachers, teams, and students. So I'm trying to think of what's best for me to kind of look here. So people are going to want to take a look at the slides, because it's going to help frame the conversation. So again, I'm going to start a bit about starting five years ago, so I'm going to look back in the past. So five years ago, our schools functioned pretty much as individual entities. We had very few connections to each other or to the district's work. We strengthened these connections over the past few years, where we currently have schools that maintain their individuality and also their sense of community, and they are now connected to each other's work and to the work of the district. We hold common vision, mission, core beliefs, which norms our work and allows us to be really focused. So, and it took us a while to find the high school's picture, so we are in good shape. Our next slide is really talking about how you begin to frame a conversation around district instruction, district planning. So we need to, the first things we need to do when we're looking at a roadmap for a school system in a reform effort is to begin with our mission. So you'll see in the documents that were handed to the committee, there you'll see reference the mission, the core beliefs, and theories of action, so you can take a look at those specifically. But we began looking at, why do we have a mission? We are able to go down that road, we have to say, where are we currently? What's important to kind of identify here is this slide that Mike helped me create has links that you can click on to the demographic information of the school system, which is some of the information that we start to take a look at. We also look at our achievement data, much of which Mike presented to us at our last meeting. We also look at self-assessment tools. There are a couple really strong tools right now from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. One is the conditions for school effectiveness, and one is the conditions for district effectiveness. If you click on that link, I don't know if we should click on that one to show, just for demonstration, the conditions for school effectiveness.
I forgot to change my [INAUDIBLE].
Yeah, if you click on that for one second. I think it is worth people taking a look at, because it really does outline, let's see if we can get this for us. If you go down, Mike, and go to the conditions for school effectiveness and go to conditions. It's helpful to frame what are considered essential processes and structures to have in place for a public school system to be considered a strong system. So, good. So if you look at this, you'll see things like effective district systems for school support and intervention. We need to have strong school leadership. You need to have aligned curriculum. You have to have effective instruction, student assessments, and it goes on and on. And there's a rubric by which you can assess where you are at the school level and also where you are at the district level. So this is some of the information we consider when we are looking at where we currently are. Also, we have a new educator evaluation model, which allows us to look at the standards, the indicators, and elements, as well as doing a level of self-reflection on where we are individually, but also where our system is. And so we've been using the demographic, the achievement data, these conditions for school effectiveness, district effectiveness, and the educator evaluation model, and any survey data we have from staff, students, or families. That helps us to know where are we currently. So again, we have a vision of where we're going, a mission statement. We know currently where we are. We have to be really reflective and honest and objective about where we sit currently, and then we get to see the gap between where we are now and where we want to be. We then determine which high-leverage structures and strategies we're going to put in place. Again, we want to use evidence-based strategies that we know have shown promise with districts that have similar demographics and/or systems that we consider ourselves similar in maybe other ways, in terms of size or location. We want to make sure that we're using these strategies to create a blueprint. So before we're going from where do we want to go, where are we currently, let's really take a good look at what are the highest leverage strategies to put in place. We began this work internally through our district instructional leadership team, and we also used technical support from people outside of our system, institutions of higher learning, and community partners. And we also used partnerships to leverage our work, so we had collective goals to move us forward. So when you take a look, one of the major, a couple of the major resources we looked at as our district instructional leadership team is professional learning communities at work and instructional rounds in education. Our leadership team, we're going into our third year working together. This group is a professional learning community. It allows us to work together to norm our beliefs about where we are, where we want to be, and what strategies do we feel will be most effective within our schools. So we also had a number of administrators and staff attend a de four, and de four workshop last year in Connecticut, and it was really helpful, because it allowed us to look at, how do you create teacher teams or professional learning community to be able to implement reform efforts and to be able to hold ourselves accountable? Many strategies came back from that workshop that you'll see reflected in this district improvement plan, and you'll see in here spoken about tonight by our staff. We also read the Instructional Rounds in Education book, which Liz City and Richard Almore were the primary authors, and some of you have joined us on instructional rounds. We've had instructional rounds, which is a tool to gather data that informs our leadership group. We've had district rounds, and now we are implementing and have implemented school-based rounds as well. So we are becoming much more expert in going into classrooms, observing, and using data to inform our leadership work. We also have spent some time reading books such as Teach Like a Champion by Lemov, which helps us to look at instructional strategies, and what do we expect to see in the classroom that would leverage high outcomes for students. We also looked at various models of instructional practice and did kind of some crosswalking and determined what do we consider to be fundamental for our system. And I believe when Rebecca Woodland came, she showed the document of our fundamental instructional practice. So again, we learned together in a community of practice, and we determined some, we came to some agreements, and we also have held ourselves responsible for implementing those agreements. We also were fortunate that Ron Ferguson came to see us last spring in March, and he came to talk to our staff, our district instructional leadership team, students, and community members. And we also had eight staff and administrators go to a workshop this summer at Harvard, which was the leadership seminar around closing the achievement gap. And for those of you who were able to see Dr. Ferguson speak last year, he is a national expert in closing the achievement gap. So we, again, we've used lots of our own internal work. We've used experts and people coming in to help us to kind of determine what would be the best strategies for us and best structures for us to use as a system. We have leadership goals each year in our team, and again, we implement and we hold each other accountable. An upcoming focus that you'll see reference, that you also heard Mike speak to at our last meeting, is data-wise. So we, as a system, need to become much more efficient and effective at identifying data that we have available, be becoming, you know, really skilled at taking that data, using it to inform instruction, but also in cycles where we are able to hold ourselves accountable. Did we try something? How do we know that it's actually making a difference for our children? So that's kind of a preview. You will see many goals and within the district improvement plan and school improvement plan that's reflected in the work of the leadership team through these resources. Also, we are very fortunate that we have spent a fair amount of time relying on the expertise within our community. We are very unique to be in a community that has five colleges and institutions of higher learning. So we have worked with the five colleges to gain action research, technical support, and to be able to share resources so that we leverage our collective efforts toward the school community goals, which I have to say, the five colleges, I have a superintendent's advisory that has representation from the five colleges, is an unbelievably functional group, supportive group, and a group which, one of their primary norms is truly what happens, which is step up. Everyone steps up to make strong connections between the public schools and higher ed. How do we benefit our students and the students who are currently in the system of higher ed? So we're very fortunate to have these partnerships to help us move forward. We also, this year, our district instructional leadership team is again working with the University of Mass, their Department of Ed, Department of Ed, well, I guess you could say, School of Education, I think is their lingo from higher ed. We have Dr. Rebecca Woodland working with us again to provide technical support regarding professional learning communities, instructional rounds, and fundamental instructional practices. And we have used that support heavily initially, and we are now able to take some steps back, and we have our own internal capacity, but she still is there to help us when needed. We also have Dr. Sarah Whitcomb, who is the faculty member who's working with us around positive behavioral supports and interventions, or interventions and supports. And we also have Dr. Lourdes Valdivieso, who's working with us around English-language learners, and she's supporting our goal around community and family engagement. So again, we're thrilled that we have people who continue to work with us, and I know we are welcoming some additional professors who will be working with us this year. So, an essential step when we are looking toward implementing the strategic plan. So again, we had a mission. We know where we are now. We see the gap. We've identified evidence-based strategies and high-yield strategies to use, and now we really have to think about our structure that drives the work. So what you see on the screen, and you also have this in your packets, is a central office organizational chart and leadership meeting structure, and what you'll see across the top is each of the educational directors are responsible for an action group, a working group. So they are the point people, and they work with other administrators and staff to work on their corresponding goals from the district improvement plan. They work and create their own cycles for that work, and weekly meet with the Educational Planning Council, where they report out on where they are within their process. It helps us to share information, quite honestly, not to duplicate efforts. We want to make sure that we are using our time efficiently and effectively, and it does hold us accountable. Having an educational planning council where we all have to say where we are on our goals, it's extremely meaningful. It's the same thing within DILT. If you have a structure that allows our colleagues to hold us accountable to the work, that's where, quite honestly, the action happens, versus just the superintendent saying, where are you on? Having that support and that press from your colleagues is critically important. The Educational Planning Council, which meets weekly, we also derives information that goes to either the district instructional leadership team that I've been referencing or the principals meeting. So this is our central office internal structure that drives the improvement plan. It is very important that you then create a structure that helps you to bring the work and has conversations lead to the school level and from the district to the school, but also from the school to the district. This is the loop where you have, from the district instructional leadership team, sorry for all the initials and acronyms, to each school that has a school instructional leadership team. So information that is being shared or decisions that have been made from the district go to the school teams, and then the school teams determine what makes most sense for their building. Each school has its unique climate and culture that has to be taken into consideration. Then you will see an example of how that school instructional leadership team fans out to the teacher teams at the school. This is an example of Crocker Farm from last year, and you'll see some of the major goal areas reflected in teams such as PBIS or co-teaching, also ELE. The resource team is identifying when students are struggling and how are you intervening? And then, of course, grade-level teams, where all the magic happens. Not to be biased, we're all very important too, but the magic happens at teacher teams, where our educators, who are unbelievably skilled, sit together and to talk about their work, and to learn from one another, and to engage in inquiry around their practice. So this, and we will speak more to what that collaborative teamwork looks like from the principals and the district perspective. So we have a structure to drive the work. We engage in a cycling of inquiries, so that we have a structure which allows us to raise a problem of practice or a question, to develop a plan, to identify our progress when we're implementing plans, to take actionable steps, and to make sure that we are monitoring the effect of our work. Again, Ron Ferguson would say to us, basically, if you're not monitoring the goals you've put in place, it's not worth putting the goals in place. I'm paraphrasing. Clearly, Ron says it much more eloquently than I, that being able to become expert in the monitoring of our progress and the progress of our students are essential in terms of creating a plan in aspects of excellence with equity. So we appreciate that Ron holds us, makes us real in all of our conversations, because he'll say, "Show me the effects." Again, to make a really clear connection, we engage in a process to help us to see where a district in our schools want to be, where the school committee has engaged in conversations about what do we want for all of our children? How do we look at where we are now and where we need to be? And we leverage our strongest strategies to create a district instructional, I mean, district improvement plan. That plan then drives school improvement plans, which you'll see and have seen how connected these plans are at this point. And then the school improvement plans drive some of the work at the teacher-team level. In our new evaluation model, which I know we spoke about last time, the teams can develop goals, so they can say, what are the major goals for the school and for the district? And that's where they create their individual goals, which allows them to gather data on their implementation or their goal-setting at the classroom level, which, again, is where it matters. And then, of course, we have the connections to students and families, because the students and families are connected to all aspects of our work, from input on the upfront, but also in terms of students having a voice in the leadership within a school. You'll see some of the goals related to youth culture and how that plays out, as well as you'll see one of the goals related to family engagement and what it takes to move all of our students forward. So I think what I'd like to do now is, I'm going to ask, this will be interesting how this plays out here. I would like to ask that, so this is kind of the framing, how we got to where we are in terms of the district plans and the school improvement plans. What we would like to do is to highlight goal areas, and then highlight a few goals under each area, and then I will have principals and district directors come up and speak to those, so they can make the connections to the plans at the school level. I'd like to ask that we just hold all the questions until the end, because that'll help us feel see the continuity, and then we'll have plenty of time where we'd love for you to ask questions on any of the documents that you received. So I think I am speaking to the first goal area. So our goal number one, which you could, if it's more helpful to you, that one-page goal document that you have within your binder might be helpful. I think it's right at the end of the school, the district improvement plan. So our first goal area that we've identified as critical or high-leverage would be to develop structures and systems needed to support a continuous district-wide instructional improvement model. We have a number of goals that are indicated under that goal area. One of the goals that we'd like to highlight tonight is, C, by December 2012, all instructional leaders will evaluate the effectiveness of collaborative teams as assigned. So I'm going to ask Principal Yaffe to come up and to talk to us a little bit about the goal that's on his school improvement plan and how this plays out at his level. So, Mr. Yaffe? Where would you like to be? Great. Thanks.
I face all of you. Hi, everyone. So this is a goal that's dear to my heart. I think, just tracing back to our district improvement plan, it's a theory of action, which really basically says that collaborative teams is the primary engine that's going to fuel our improvement, improve teaching and learning. And so I think at Wildwood, we state that. We look at that as a theory of action, then we go on to say, well, what is it that makes for an effective collaborative team? What are the characteristics? Because it's not just that you put a group of people together and that they're going to improve teaching and learning. And so we start to look at those characteristics of effective teams as a staff. Number one, we said, okay, what are the ingredients that are necessary? So this is now the third year, I think, we've really moved in this direction. So we're just saying, these are things that we know about teams. Teams need to have a shared purpose, a shared sense of goals, which are mission. They also need to have certain structures that are in place to define how they meet, so having norms, having ways to say, okay, here's how we're going to make decisions, here's how we're going to reach a consensus. But these are givens now. These are ways that the teams operate. And then we look at also discourse. What type of discourse? It has to be a disciplined discourse. It has to be focused on teaching and learning. There has to be a sense where, a process where all voices are heard. And so these are the kind of things that, when I go to team meetings, these are the kind of things that we'll be looking at. Then we're at the point now with our instructional leadership team, we're saying, well, where do we want to move the work of collaborative teams? And the area that I think's one of the most important will be saying, we want to look at student work, and we want to do this in a disciplined way. We want to look at our data and our assessments together. We want to make some shared agreements of where we want to go with instruction and curriculum, so that if you're a parent at Wildwood, your experience in third grade, if you have a third grader, is going to, there's going to be a shared value, shared systems, shared curriculum, so it'll be similar. It will be equitable. And the last thing I wanted to say, too, is that in the teams and in their work that they're doing, that the teaching and learning is really at the center, and that's their focus, and that's the part that when I'm, in this area, when I'm saying, well, we're going to evaluate the effectiveness, when I go, that's what the discussions will be about. So for me, as their evaluator, I'll be spending times observing this process and spending time with them. Oh, the last thing, so I have my notes, is part of this that you can hopefully see as a thread is that there will be shared practice, so that it's, whether we call it de-privatization or any other term, that people are saying, I had this great idea, here's how it worked, or what worked for you, what didn't work, and that people are sharing in this way. That's it.
Thank you, Nick. I'd love to just add briefly that it can sound overly simplistic to say that we have teacher teams, but it is truly a skill to be able to have adults sit in a room together and to identify a common outcome that they'd like to see happen, or a conversation that they're going to have, and then to really facilitate the conversation well, so that you move you move past the surface conversation of, "What are you doing tomorrow in class?" And get down to, "Ooh, what did you do to, to get those results?" And there are multiple ways that you can facilitate those conversations, and there are multiple ways that teams can be structured. And some of our work this year is to go that step deeper and to be able to say, "How do we use data within teams to really identify maybe adjustments in our practice?" Or adjustments in, I guess, decisions across the school, not just within a specific classroom or a specific team. So, it's really powerful work. So, I will go to the next goal, which is, not that I need glasses, but, "By June 2013, the leadership team will have implemented site-based action plans to ensure faculty and staff have an in-depth understanding of the district's fundamental instructional practices." So, at, for this, we're going to click, the mic is going to click, and I'm going to ask Betsy to come up and talk a little bit about fundamental instructional practices and how this is playing out at the middle school.
Thanks, Maria. All right. I'm going to start by telling you where we were a year ago. A year ago at this time, we were looking at an instructional practice called objectives, and many of you have heard us talk about this before. It's really our, we used faculty meetings and instructional rounds to be able to think about, "How do we very consistently tell students, 'This is what we expect you to know and be able to do at the end of this lesson.'" So, it's a previewing step at the beginning of a lesson. It's continuing to come back to that objective, to tie it all together, to keep everybody focused throughout, in an effort to help everybody stay on the same page and, and gain depth of knowledge. So, that's where we were. At the end of our real study around that and our, and our work toward using objectives consistently, what we, what we said is, "We'd like to continue this work. We want to continue to look at instructional practices that are going to help us move our, our work along." We took a vote. We looked at all of the instructional practices. We took a vote, and it was very clear. So, when we talked about objectives, of course, we said, "This is where, what we want kids to know and be able to do," which begs the obvious question. At the end of the lesson, we want to say, "Do you know it? And are you able to do it now?" And that's what brought us into our next step of studying formative assessment. Now, you think about formative assessment, maybe that's not such a big, big deal, but when you really start getting down to it, it's a complicated process. There's a few pieces to it. The first aspect is really generating activities, building our repertoire in, in terms of being able to tell at any given point, "Where are our students? Did they grasp this?" Sometimes it's formal, sometimes it's more informal, every day in, in shorter periods of time. And then from that, once we have a sense of where our kids are, this is where it gets really interesting, and it can go in a lot of different directions, and it takes a lot of deep thinking to do this well. At that point, we really want to be thinking about, "If my, if my kids are here, or even one or two of my kids are here, where do I take the instruction next?" Okay? So, it's really using that information to drive our instruction in ways that are highly meaningful. And often, we stop thinking about it at that point, but formative assessment has one more piece, and that's the opportunity to give feedback to students about where they are. We forget that sometimes. Tell them, "This is what you're going to learn. We have a sense of what, what they've learned. We have an idea of where we want to go with our instruction." But we forget to give them really clear feedback, and it's our belief that if kids have a good sense of their understanding, of their own learning, and, and where their gaps are and where they need to go next, they're going to be more successful. So, we're going to be using faculty time. We're not quite sure. Two to four faculty meetings. We're not quite sure how long this is going to take us this year. May take us the entire year. If we feel like we've really got a handle on this instructional practice, our plan will be to select a new one as a faculty and, and move forward.
Thank you, Betsy. I think, Lisa, did you want to add on? Thank you, of how that plays out in Pelham.
Good evening.
Good evening, Lisa.
So, the instructional, the fundamental instructional practices became part of our work in the district instructional leadership team, I believe in 2011. We really started to talk about them and what they looked like and, and what, what the different elements were. And in Pelham School last year, we, we really started to talk about objectives and, and the instructional practices, and we decided to incorporate it into our school improvement plan and really focus on the objective piece last year. And so, we made a decision that this year, we would focus on it much more comprehensively. And what that means is that during our district instructional leadership team, there already is a pre-planned agenda for the year in which we will be looking at each element more intensely and, and focused. And our plan is to bring that back to our school leadership team, which really, in Pelham, because we're, we're smaller, is, is all of the, the teaching staff, which is wonderful. And so, you know, our, our plan is to really explore them more in depth and, and really develop a, a common language and, and, you know, what they look like and really have some shared experiences about what that looks like in practice. And in order to be able to talk about them, we have to have a lot of time spent together raising literacy and norming these practices. It's also important to note that as part of our new educator evaluator system is that we'll be, this is one of the, the components that we'll be looking at as, as we'll be observing teachers in their classrooms, and so, what we really want to, you know, be fair to teachers in saying that, you know, "We need to all have this common experience in order to, to do this and do this well." And I think lastly, for students, you know, if we're, we're talking about how it trickles down to students, so, these are best practices that have been demonstrated to be, you know, very effective in providing balanced lesson plans and, and teaching practices, so that students are impacted positively and improve achievement levels. So, that's what it looks like in Pelham School, and I think this is part of all the work that we'll be doing in the district this year.
Thank you, Lisa. I think that one thing that Lisa mentioned that I really would love to jump on for one second is that when you look at professions, often there's a common language or, that, that kind of defines their work and allows people to be able to engage in conversations, whether it's a medical field or, you know, or whatever, accounting, which we won't talk about finances, but, you know, there's a common language that allows people to sit in a room together and have a discussion, so know, you actually know what you're talking about. In our, in the educational profession at times, that's a little nebulous. And so, when you're sitting in a room together, if you don't have a common language to engage in conversation, it takes a lot of time to figure out what some person is really trying to get to. Fundamental instructional practice is having a common language allows us to engage in that conversation and to really get down to the core of the issue at hand. So, I think it's critical, and it is one of the, the aspects of the educator evaluation model that is defined, that we need to have instructional practices that are, are known and understood by faculty and staff, and I think ideally, students as well. Okay, so, we are going to move to goal area two, and I'm going to ask Rhonda Cohen to come up. And Rhonda is going to speak to this goal area and guide us through the next conversation.
Okay, so, goal area two is to ensure access to a guaranteed viable and coordinated standards-based curriculum and a tiered instructional model with evidence-based interventions, academic and non-academic. And what this goal represents is the responsibility of a school district to provide a coordinated standards-based curriculum and to ensure that access. So, the intervention models that school districts develop, it really is an issue of accessing the curriculum for all students. Now, we're going to be speaking, Ian Stith and I, on A, and I'm going to speak on B, but the way we're going to start is that the goal that's highlighted is in grades K5, every student will be taught a math curriculum that is aligned with the revised Massachusetts curriculum frameworks, and that really speaks to the year-one implementation of the everyday math program.
By the way, everyone, this is Ian Stith. You haven't met him yet, and welcome, Ian. He's our K through eight math science coordinator.
Nice to meet everybody. So, like Rhonda said, this is the first year of the everyday math implementation, so there's a lot of things that go into it, of course, but I just wanted to highlight a few of them. So, first off, being just the resources that are available to everyone, so all the teachers do have all the kits that they require and the online access and manipulative kits that, to get the program done the right way. We also have the professional development and support systems that we're, we're putting in place to support the implementation. They go together, but not the same. Professional development-wise, started last year with full-day trainings for the teachers at all the different grade levels, including special ed and intervention staff. And this year, we'll have two more half-days dedicated to everyday math training throughout the year. Terms of support and some professional development as well, we'll be, Rhonda and I will be meeting with the teachers on a monthly basis for grade-level district-wide meetings to plan and talk about different issues within the curriculum, just moving it forward in general. They'll also have regular meetings with the coach once a month, which has been worked into the Wednesday schedule as well. And then we also have, changed the coaching work a little bit, that they will be, now have a reg, more scheduled work with the teachers to, in a cycled way, so that they'll work through the different grade levels and working with individual teachers and across the grade levels, getting through everyone over the course of the year multiple times. And we hired subs to support that, so that they, the teachers will be able to meet with the coach and also have the coach present in their classroom and visit each other's classrooms to observe each other and give each other feedback and try to problem-solve in general.
I would love to just add onto what Ian's saying. It's been wonderful to have Ian create a formal structure which allows us to have this embedded professional development, because in the past, there've been times where we've kind of left it to chance or by invitation, and people come and may choose not to. This allows for a really strong cycle, and we have amazing coaches who are working with our staff, and the substitutes that we have hired are retired teachers who have extremely strong skills, so that they're able to jump into the classrooms and help out in a very seamless, seamless way. So, thank you, Ian.
Okay, goal B, by June 2013, the district will review math curriculum materials in grades six to 12 to ensure alignment to the revised curriculum frameworks. And I want to make a few points. One is, is that to ensure the alignment between sixth and seventh grade, we will be reviewing grade six and seven math textbooks with a goal of identifying a math textbook to be used beginning next fall. On October 23rd, there is a school committee presentation. It's entitled, "The Teaching and Learning Update." At that meeting, we will outline the review process, and that we also intend there'll be a January update and also an end-of-the-year update. It's important to, to understand that undergirding this work is that is guided by the work from the Common Core standards, the National Council of Teachers of Mathematics. Since the standards have been adopted by the state of Massachusetts, what that looks like is, in our case, to ensure that we're doing the work that all basically districts around the country are focusing on, is, one example is that this past summer, we had our math high school department chair, Jane Moody, and also Robin Oakes, who's a high school math teacher. They went to a conference in California, and it was designed for high school mathematics teachers. It was specific, it brought in high school teachers and department heads from around the country, and the entire focus was on mathematical reasoning and how we teach problem-solving at the high school level. And the way that that conference was set up is that all the districts that participated are receiving professional develop in the form of a video conference, like, it's going to be two hours a month, where it's specific about what are the challenges? How do we take mathematics problems that we might look at from our own experiences? And how do we ensure that we are able to teach both the content, which we're often familiar with in terms of the procedures, about what does it really mean to embrace the mathematical practice standards? And the reason that's very important is that the big change in the field is that students are going to be assessed on the practice standards, not just being able to get, to be able to get the right answer. So, that is an area that you're going to hear more about this year, and it will be part of the October 23rd presentation.
Great. Okay, so, Annie. Annie's going to speak to our next. Oh, hold one second. Let me just make sure, did middle school or high school want to jump in there, or are you guys good? You're good? Okay. Sorry, Annie.
That's okay.
So, Annie?
Good evening. District Improvement Plan Goal 2F states, "Evidence-based, by June 2014," excuse me, "evidence-based academic interventions will be identified and implemented for students identified by universal screening and/or other assessments. All of the elementary schools have similarly-aligned language in their school improvement plans." For example, this goal directly informs Crocker Farm Elementary School Improvement Plan Goal 2, which says, "To use data to inform our instruction and interventions." Specifically, target areas 2A and 2C. Target 2A explains that we use multiple types of assessment data throughout the school year to continuously analyze and address areas of strength and challenge for our students. Types of assessments used to inform elementary instruction and interventions include the MAP assessment that takes place three times throughout the year, MCAS, of course, Teachers' College Reading and Writing Continuum, DRA reading assessments, everyday math, end-of-unit, mid-year, and end-of-year assessments. Target 2C describes the 30-minute time period we call enhancement period, which is designated in the daily schedule of every classroom for differentiated instruction that will directly support struggling students. Based on the pyramid, you want to click on the pyramid? That's okay. Based on the Pyramid Response to Intervention Model, or RTI, you'll hear it called, this goal defines a time in the master school schedule to target struggling students with the intention of boosting their academic capabilities through small group intensive instruction that will build the skills necessary for their consistent, successful participation in the general education classroom. Types of evidence-based instruction strategies used in the RTI interventions include LLI, Level Literacy Intervention, Wilson Reading, and everyday math differentiation strategies. Every six to eight weeks, classroom teachers, English Language Education teachers, specialists, coaches, and administration participate in facilitated structured meeting protocols that reexamine the composite of students at each grades, grade level, excuse me, based on both classroom performance and assessment data that we've gathered. Groups are then adjusted as necessary to ensure equitable and appropriate access to intervention support. This standardized system occurs across our elementary schools, providing all elementary students in Amherst with access to strong interventions. The structure is organic, however, and dynamic, and as such, is continuously being examined by principals and the Central Office for Teaching and Learning to best meet the needs of Amherst staff and students. Thank you.
Thank you for speaking for the elementary schools. So, I think high school's coming up. Mark Jackson's going to speak to intervention at the high school.
Hi.
Mark?
I don't know you.
Oh, Kathy Ma. I'm sorry.
Hi, Mark Jackson.
Pelham.
We got to ring her.
No, everyone, Kathy.
We got to ring her.
Right. So, I pitched Maria to make sure that I got in on this, this particular goal area, because, let me just back up, because we came to you, the high school came to you in the last budget cycle, and we made an appeal. We made an appeal for 2.0 FTE, and we cut it in fairly broad terms at the time, for the purposes of intervention. So, if I can just piggyback on Annie's language, or put this more in an elementary context, it was the case at the time that the high school did not have satisfactory tier-two responses to identify patterns of struggle, right? And so, what I simply want to do tonight is to close the loop and come back to you and say, "We came, you responded, and what I'm trying to do in this particular slide is to provide you evidence that, that 2.0 really got put to work." All right? So, so what I did was try to create a snapshot of, of the menu of intervention and support opportunities at the high school. So, again, this, these would be things that would sit largely, not exclusively, but largely in a, in kind of a tier-two effort. But the thing that I want to draw your attention to is, is, is number two. So, full 1.0 of the 2.0 that we requested for is one human being, a skilled math teacher, whose day is filled up with kids who've been identified through, and this was probably the, at least, as interesting part of the story, kids that are identified. So, how do we go about identifying kids? Without strong tier-two routines, we didn't have a good set of norms about what data would we gather, who would we get it from, how were we organizing, what conclusions were we drew when we looked at it? So, Mickey, your assistant Andrea Dustin, spent a whole lot of time in the spring with Danny Marr and Jay Moody. Danny Marr and Jay Moody gathering the data, the performance outcome data from the eighth grade. And on page thirty-one and thirty-two in the appendix, I've taken just as a sample how we assemble all the math data. And the categories are a little cryptic, right? So, I should have included a key to those, but it's math data, MCAS data, raw scores, scale scores. But it goes to the question of, if you're going to get in the Tier Two game, you have to have some basis, you have to have some criteria, because clearly, everybody could make, there's an infinite number of possibilities for a finite number of seats. So, that was a big part of the story and I think next year, when we go down this road, we'll have a pathway that's been cleared and we'll be more efficient and more effective in doing it. But right now, in the ninth grade, we've identified forty-four students who are in a math intervention class with class sizes around eight to twenty, or eight to ten, with a certified math teacher and a curriculum that is inclusive of modules that are matched to tied with identified student need. So, if I'm an elementary person, they're yawning right now, right? We know this drill, right? But for us, without a well-established Tier Two, this is, this is the first time that we've been down the road. Similarly, I would point out to you, number three, the individualized reading. So, we've had this course in, in the program of studies, we hadn't paid attention to it in the way that we should have, and so Maria enabled us to reach out to UMass. We've got some very strong assistance from folks there to help us design a research-based reading intervention for kids. And it's across the grade levels, but predominantly younger kids. And again, both these courses are not designed to replace the standard math and English course, but to supplement and support. So, kids are kept moving with their cohort, which is always a key piece to keep kids engaged, but they provide, they are provided with addition, additional supplementary intervention to target, target identified challenges. And it's probably useful for the purposes of the conversation to distinguish, or at least for me to clarify, how we distinguish intervention and support. So, support is, there's an adult and there's time and there's permission for kids to get assigned work done. That's different from an intervention, which is an identified challenge and their skill repertoire has been identified and the instruction is intending to target it, so as to remediate it. So, there's that, and then there's this. So, the longer we kind of sat with the issue of a Tier Two intervention, it just kind of logically backed us up and backed us up to ask the question, what ought, what other things ought we be doing at the classroom level, at the routine practice level, to forestall kids needing a Tier Two intervention? Right? That seems fairly self-evident, but if you're going to be played at the Tier Two level, in addition to providing a common viable accessible curriculum to everybody, there's other things that need to be going. So, I just need to be going on. So, I just wanted to show you these, these three strands quickly. So, we have people in the building to hold work around reading and not in the individualized reading course way, but in a way that brings the issue to the attention of all teachers and all content areas. I asked, I asked the meeting of department heads last spring, how many, how many people, how many departments ask kids to manage complex texts? Everyone in the room raises their hand, right? So, I don't care if you're the engineering teacher, or you're the English teacher, the science teacher, complex text is what we're asking kids to manage. So, a number of you have seen the video that we made with the kids in M-SAN last year, the number of issues it raises about kids of color in a predominantly middle-class white environment and the particular things that are unique to their experience. So, we've isolated that as a persistent strand of professional development. Then the last, we've had two sessions now with the faculty on executive functioning. So, I don't know if you know this data point, that twenty-five percent of the incoming ninth graders have IEPs. I should no longer call them incoming ninth graders, they're here already. Twenty-five percent of this year's ninth grade class have IEPs. The majority of kids who have IEPs have executive functioning challenges. So, that in combination with what we know about adolescents and executive functioning in general, this is a third strand that we're going to try to carry through the year. So, in terms of real time on the ground, Mike, can you just go to the next one real quick? Right? So, it looks like this. So, the faculty meeting's on the left and we're going to try to carry those strands across the year with people inside the building largely holding this work. So, the presentation that the liaisons did on executive functioning for the last two meetings, it's been very strong, right? People have taken to places that they hadn't been before. So, so to me, though, so this isn't strictly in the strict Tier Two sense of the word, I think logically and educationally it parallels it and supports it in a way that's important. Okay, bye.
Excellent. Okay, so I'm just checking to see, Betsy, did you have?
Yeah.
Okay, you're good? Okay, so the next goal, I believe it is, oh, I'm sorry, so G, and who is starting with G? Is it, Fay is starting, and then I'm sure other people are here to help out. So, Fay?
So, I'm going to read goal G. In a minute. That's by, oop, I'm sorry. Well, I'm not going to. So, by June 2014, all schools in the district will have created and implemented the comprehensive school-wide positive behavioral plan to teach, intervene, and support the positive behavior of all students. And fortunate that we are here in Amherst, we have a partnership with UMass, Maria mentioned it earlier, with Dr. Sarah Whitcomb, and she and her doctoral students started work last year, I believe it was last year, with the elementary schools and at the middle school level, and have initiated the positive behavioral supports teams in each school to really work on what plan is appropriate for that, the culture and climate in that school, to really have this initiative take hold and be a foundation in those schools. You're going to hear some specifics about that. But this year, as a follow-up to the first-year plan, those schools are continuing in a second year plan, and this will continue, the guideline is it probably takes about three to five years to have a really stronghold on changing the culture and climate, so that it is ingrained into everyday life in the building. So, this is, this is something that's going to take a while. But this year, Dr. Whitcomb and her doctoral students will be starting their work in identifying a first-year plan at the high school and at Southeast Campus. We're really excited about this initiative, because although this whole goal area is really talking about instruction, in order for instruction to have a real ability to take hold and be meaningful and relevant to our students, the PBIS framework and foundation really can make a huge difference. So, now we're going to have people talk about the specifics that are going on in their school.
Thank you. I think Derek is, is starting for us?
Yeah.
Excellent.
It's always awkward to sort of speak here when I want to speak here, and it's tricky to follow Mark Jackson in some respects. But anyway.
Many respects.
Still here, Mark? So, here's what I would say, I mean, I've been up here before and we've talked a little bit about some of this stuff. So, so for me, you know, parents, I'm a parent, I know some of you up here as, as parents as well. What are we often looking for? We're often looking for consistency, right, as parents? We're often making sure, we're looking for high expectation, high expectations for our kids. So, for me, the PBIS stuff starts in a really good place with that stuff. There's consistency and there's high expectations. And so, maybe, let me just back up a little bit and I'll say, in terms of an end goal, I mean, in terms of what we're really trying to get here, I'd made a couple of notes earlier. And so, for me, what we're trying to do here is we're trying to increase academic performance, right? And I can talk to you about that a little bit in a second. We're looking to make sure that the safety of buildings is way up to a high level. We want to try and decrease the problematic behavior in our buildings, which is not high, but we want to make sure we decrease it. And we overall want to have a positive school climate, right? So, to me, those are maybe perhaps lofty, but they're certainly attainable goals and I see no reason why we're, we're not going to get to those goals. So, so the PBIS work is fairly straightforward, it's almost like common sense, you know, except common sense seven oh five in some respects, it's quality stuff. So, really where we're at in our buildings these days, and we're all at slightly different places, elementary school, but let me just tell you what we've been working on. In our schools, we're really doing this, we're trying to do a couple of things, is we're trying to define behavioral expectations, right? So, we're trying to identify behaviors we want our kids to follow. We're trying to teach the behaviors, right? Because there's a notion itself, right, that, no, our kids don't walk into school, and I think hopefully, people would agree that appropriate behavior and social skills, we don't just wake up and have those, they've got to be taught, just like reading and writing. So, we believe, and what we're trying to do is teach, teach our kids these behavioral expectations, we're trying to acknowledge kids when they do the right thing. So, in life, we are acknowledged when you do something well, you know, and I can give you good examples, recently, some students have been borrowing my chair and taking my chair to their classroom when they've done something lofty and mighty, a nice little chair that somehow they can use, lots of good stuff. And it doesn't have to be like big prizes, lots of good things. But let's also be blunt about this, we want to also make sure that proactively be correct behaviors, right? So, we're not really in the business of making sure that, that we let kids go free if they've done something they shouldn't have done. We're looking to make sure that we address them and then we do something to help correct those behaviors. The other thing is we want to use data, and we're going to talk about that later, I think, educators handbook stuff. We're not just doing this by collecting, you know, qualitative information from folks, we're making sure we're collecting appropriate data to inform our practice. At the end of the day, our sense is, is that our school, I think when kids have got behavioral expectations that are taught and there's predictable responses, positive and corrective, we think the vast majority of our students are going to be in a place where they can learn and be always fully part of the math or whatever else is going on in the classroom. We brought a few slides for you, we don't want to get too fancy, although we will. So, the good thing about all the efforts that we're working on in our schools, it's not just like administrators leading the charge, up here is something that's happening at Crocker Farm, these are posters and banners that are up in our schools. And so, we have this amazing art teacher, her name is Diane Travis, and Diane Travis helped work with a bunch of people over summer, we come up this Crocker Farm cultivates care, because our, our motto is around cooperation, accountability, respect, and empathy. So, you know, if everyone can see, you know, you can see these are the things that we're working on, we've got these around the building, our students know what these are, they know why they're up there, and so on and so forth. This is a, this is a piece, and I think some of the other schools have got something similar, I don't think, I put this up in the slide, Mike. But again, consistency's the key. We've got expectations all across the school community, and again, in classrooms, we can sort of show that we want to see, what does it look like to cooperate in the classroom? This is, this is hung in every classroom in the building, and it may be slightly different in each class, but the same notion again, is that we're consistent, that we're looking to teach kids these behaviors, folks in the audience are sure to have a look at some of them. So, again, lofty but attainable goals, fairly straightforward stuff. We're in the early days of it, we're probably year two and a bit, I think other schools are in the same boat. But again, what we're looking for is consistency, high expectations, making sure that we believe that our kids are, have an opportunity to be taught some of the social skills that they need to be able to operate and function appropriately in school. Elementary folks, did I miss anything? You want to add anything?
Look through the pictures, Monica's coming up. I'd like to say while Monica's coming up, it's as important for the adults to rethink how we approach behavior as it is for kids, because to really take the shift and to, to frame our conversations around behavior, that behavior is not, it's not always negative, and that behavior from a child is trying to get a need met, and we need to determine what is that need, and then help them to find, hopefully, a more acceptable way in some cases, to have that need met at the school. So, adults have to shift their construct and be more thoughtful around the practice and the responses, as well as a shift for children. Monica?
Thank you. So, this aligns with our goal three of our school improvement plan, and it is to have a positive learning environment throughout the school. And so, at Fort River, we are catching, well, we're catch, we're catching the wave, but catch the wave is our motto. And so, what does that mean for us? That means that we work hard, we act responsibly, we're very respectful, and we keep everyone safe. And so, we talk about that, and go to the matrix for me? Thank you. In all contexts of the school, so in all settings, how does that look for us? And so, when we first started out school, we spent time, each classroom teacher, teaching lessons based upon this matrix. So, every school, every elementary school does have a behavioral matrix that is centered around their core values. Okay, Mike, you can go to the passport. And so, what we did, September 12th, we celebrated the completion of these lessons, and it was so awesome, all the kids came to the gym with their passports in hand and stamped, so they know what our expectations are in the hallway, in the cafeteria, on the bus. And this is just great, because we're not expecting students to know, we're telling them what they need to know.
Thank you, Monica.
I think Nick might say something, but I just want to make a final plea again, is that I know some of this makes you seem like small details in the life of a larger school, but the small details in anywhere in life are critically important. And I think we are committed to make sure that we're focused on these small details, to make sure that they're, that they're developed properly and operating, functioning properly.
Nick, did you want to come on up?
Sure.
And Lisa, I think?
Yeah.
Thanks, Derek. Thanks, Mark.
We have a few people coming in here.
So, just to tie into a little bit with our cooperative, our collaborative work, as a staff, what we're doing is a self-study, because we believe that also, if you want positive behavior, you use positive language. So, looking at the teacher language and the ways that we notice children's positive behaviors and really exercising that new muscle of paying attention to that, and how we specifically give kids feedback on the positive behaviors that they're exhibiting. And it's interesting, Maria, it's great to do this in this way, because I noticed that STAR, really our values of safety, trying our best, responsibility, acting responsibly, and respectful are just like the wave, it's just a different order, but it's really, and our value, and there's a whole process that you've come about, kind of a collective process, where you're, as a staff, and that's what we all did in the past year or two. And in our case, we incorporated the children's voices and the promises that they had made. But it's interesting that these are the values that we decided are important, so did Fort River.
I think they're all kind of organic, whether it's growing or moving, if I can add my two cents to that. Lisa?
So, here we see our Pelham banner, which highlights our core values, which we developed last year with a lot of input from families and students and staff, which are practice kindness, accept responsibility, work together, and show respect. And so, we have, we worked really hard this summer to develop lesson plans, and similar to the Fort River matrix, we've also developed a specific lesson plan for each area. And so, when we were looking to teach children about behaviors in school and what we expect from them, telling students to be good in the hallways isn't always effective, you really need to be very concrete and explicit. This is what being good look, you know, this is what walking in the hallway quietly looks like, this is what it looks like in the library when you're following the rules and listening to teachers and doing all that you need to do. So, this is a very proactive rather than reactive approach, that we're really emphasizing five positives to one negative, so that we're really giving kids lots of encouragement. We're teaching, sort of front-loading, you know, what we would like to see happening in the classrooms and across all settings in the school. And we're also really emphasizing with staff, this is a whole school culture endeavor. This is not just for teacher, this is not just for fair professionals, this is not just for students, this is everyone working together, and it's really to ensure consistency, so that we're all delivering across all settings in the school, similar expectations, and likewise, providing encouragement and reinforcement and acknowledging what we're seeing every day. And so, our lessons are beginning this week, and we have wonderful teaching posters that have also been printed up and developed for teachers to use as tools. And our teachers are now planning to do some skits for the students, which should be very fun and interesting, to really highlight some of what we're putting into practice in the school. And so, we're really, I have to say, the teachers are really excited about this and they're very welcoming, and I think it's going to be a really interesting process. And well, we have plans to keep cycling back throughout the year with all of our staff to sort of keep our plan on track and adjust as needed, because, you know, it is in process and it will take time to sort of nail down the specifics, but it's fun and we feel like we're doing some really good work, so.
Thank you, Lisa. Betsy, and then Mark? Great.
Okay, so I wasn't actually going to talk, but I am, because I have to, sorry, we've got one too, all right? Here's the middle school. Better way, here we are. Arms, baby, accountable, respectful, motivated, safe, that's what we are. And there's our little hurricane, be a leader, all right? So, we discovered that our hurricane, we think is actually a tropical storm, we had a little crisis about that, but we're going to fix it as we move forward. Anyway, so we're doing the same thing, expectations, common language around those things, we're talking about, and we're looking at acknowledging students when they're making really good choices and being leaders and modeling our, our core values. The one other thing that, we're doing this here, which is new, and I want to invite you guys to come see, is Tuesday mornings, we have a seventh grade class meeting during advisory from seven forty-five, sorry, it's a little early, seven forty-five to eight oh five. Friday mornings, we have an eighth grade class meeting, and it's really this opportunity to build community, to celebrate the good things that are happening at our school. We're bringing community people in, our kids are going to be talking to each other, sharing their work, and it's also an opportunity for us to talk to kids. And we presented them with a four-to-one challenge. We all, negative stuff slips out of our mouth every once in a while, or often, right? We say something, it slips out, we say that one negative comment to each other. We have a challenge at our school right now, that for every negative thing that comes out of your mouth, you're going to try and make four positive comments, okay? So, you'll see four-to-one challenge around our school, you'll see it on our board when you come in, talk to your kids, if you have any middle school kids in your life, and see how it's going.
Thank you. So, Mark, and then Dave.
So when I went home tonight, I saw that Jerry Sandusky was sentenced to thirty or sixty years. And the reason it's significant, it's worth noting that, was because it was a year ago today, a year ago when that thing broke at Penn State. And one of the things that that initiated at the high school was a lot of kind of head-scratching and soul-searching for the implications of that event. So to make a lot of conversation short, the thing that was distilled from that is that he had a lot of powerful people, both in terms of their position and in terms of their physical prowess, who at the end of the day found no way to get up and over the pressures to be silent. And so as we juxtapose that with a lot of what passed as the bullying conversation, and you should know the principles, I assume this is true for people here, we could pitch the bullying program like a couple of weeks online. Is that true for you guys? So everybody's got a bullying game, right? I'm going to speak to all your kids, I'll transform them, five easy steps. It's the biggest racket. So in addition to it being a racket, I was trying to find a way through kind of the legality of it. So, you know, Marta led the charge, and the push was for the district to develop a state, and a lot of it felt very legalistic. And it wasn't until the Penn State thing hit that I think something switched in terms of trying to figure out what's really at issue here. And so, and so again, to make a long story short, the issue was, could we equip kids by active training, and if that's the through line with PBS, teaching kids to do the things that you want them to do to promote the culture that you want, rather than assuming that they will, hope that they will, consequence them into submission? And so for me, the issue was, could you take a bunch of adolescents and attune them to the seduction of silence? How when they're faced with a morally challenging situation, they would have the skills and the resources to tap because they've been trained to tap it? And that can intervene, and we'll get to youth culture and Ron in a couple minutes, but, you know, Ferguson says in the surveys that he does nationwide, among the top three things that inhibit academic performance in classes, kids are too afraid to open their mouth because they feel like they're going to be teased. So could kids fight through the peer pressure and interrupt that? Could they do it in the hall when somebody got pressured for lunch money, somebody got muscled in the bed, any of those things? Could we equip kids with skills to resist the pressures of silence? So, I don't know who found the grant, Marta, somebody got a grant to hook us up with this training outfit in...
Athol?
Quabin.
Quabin, Quabin mediation. It's in the plan. Right? So in March, they're going to come, they're going to come and they're going to train thirty kids and twelve adults, and it's a train-the-trainer model. So a year from now, when we have an advisory, this is going to be a strand through the advisory that this cohort of kids that we're going to train for eighteen hours, and essentially, it's called, they call it active bystander training. I call it resisting silence. Right? Do they have the skills to impart, they will have the skills to impart to other kids, and hopefully we go like that in terms of being able to identify kids who go to the high school as a non-silent bunch.
Thank you, Mark. I wasn't sure where you were going with that, I'm sorry to say. And Dave Slovan, who's principal of Southeast Campus, and again, an invitation to hear more about Southeast Campus, which is our in-district day placement.
That's right.
A special education placement. So Dave?
Hi. So, you know, following Mark and all these other principals is pretty amazing, so I'm going to kind of keep it short. Dr. Brady talked about Southeast Campus and the high schools starting their first year kind of implementation. Actually, Southeast Campus has been involved in positive behavioral supports for many years, and a lot of the things that are in schools now, we've had and are really proud to have, and everything from incentives, everything from, you know, this has been up. We've got to change it a little bit, get our acronym together for five, six years. And it's, you know, based in the same kinds of structures, and we're looking forward to kind of making it blossom. But one of the things we really are proud about, we invite everybody on the board to come and see is our community meeting. It's a meeting, we had it today, it's one of the best days of the week. It's Tuesday morning, kids come in, it's from eight to eight-thirty, and it's where we start with acknowledgements. And it's one of the most precious times of the week for everybody, and we talk about this, where actually students acknowledge other students for their good work. Teachers acknowledge students for their good work, for interactions. Students acknowledge teachers. And you can't help but walk away with this kind of like, wow! Because you don't hear it all the time, and these kids are all raising their hands, and they're about little simple acts. They're acknowledging little simple acts that we take for granted, and when you start acknowledging, you stop taking it for granted. And so I invite everybody to come and participate in that. Also in that community meeting, we do have our fun part. We have a little bit of a lottery, you know, get your name in, eighty-five percent. We have a merit award that I'm really proud of because it's, not everybody gets it. You know, it's two, three, you've got to be there every single day, you've got to have all your homework in, you've got to have above eighty-five percent. It's not a simple task. And so it has a level of which, you know, we're setting a high standard. And everybody knows that one of the strongest pieces about Southeast Campus is its community. So we celebrate it. And so I'm proud to be there, it's been a wonderful blessing, so.
Thank you, Dave.
I think it could be. Do you want people to take a break? Yeah. You announce it.
We're going to take, in recognition of how long you've been here and how much longer I think we still need to go, we're going to take a break for five minutes. So please get up, walk around, stretch. We'd like to have you back at eight, excuse me, ten minutes before the hour, please. Thank you.
Yeah, we've done some heavy lifting. But rest because that, but I thought people might need to use the ladies or gentlemen's room.
Thank you. So if anyone needs copies, if you want to quietly come forward and Deb can distribute a copy of those items that you need. Maria?
Okay. So I think we're going to switch to the next goal, which is goal area three, and Mike is going to take this.
Sure. So it's around the Massachusetts educator evaluation model, and you've all heard some about this. And this might seem disconnected because you're all on this committee because you're interested in the benefit of kids, but I'm going to maybe tell a little bit of a narrative that would help. It's not mine. It's Atul Gawande. Atul Gawande's a professor of medicine at Harvard Medical College, and he's a surgeon at Brigham and Wiggum, Brigham and Women's, excuse me. And so he wrote a very fascinating and well-publicized article last year in The New Yorker where he, he's a very world-famous surgeon, and he's on vacation and he sees, he's playing tennis, and he sees a high school kid helping out someone he knows. And he says, he's thinking, all right, I'm really working on my serve. So he pays the kid a couple dollars, gets a high school kid to watch him. The high school kid who's very good at tennis is able to tell him, oh, you need to tweak this, 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 and this, and all of a sudden his serve's better. And he goes home and he's watching tennis on TV, and he sees Rafael Nadal, who's number one in the world at that point. And all of a sudden, they pan to the crowd and they sees Rafael Nadal has a coach. He's getting consistent feedback over time. So this is the world's best tennis player, and he has a system in place for improvement where he gets routine feedback, in Rafael Nadal's case, on a daily basis. So he goes back to his hospital and says, oh, you know, I know I'm a good surgeon, and yet I could be better. So he institutes a practice where he has other surgeons watch him as he's performing surgery because he wants to improve. Even though he's at Harvard Medical College, Brigham William Women's, extremely high, you know, amazingly high up in the terms of prestige and talent of surgeons, there's always room to improve, and that's how it is. So when you think about the Massachusetts educator evaluation model, there's a connection because what he felt like is, if I can get coached, if I can get support, if I can get feedback, I will save lives. Right? That feedback that I get as a surgeon helps save people's lives, and I would argue in a maybe less direct way, the same is true for our teachers. Our work is that important as educators, and getting consistent feedback on a regular basis really makes a difference in our kids' lives. That's the connection of something that might seem kind of abstract or large to the kids, is that we want all of our teachers getting routine feedback to improve their practice. And this is true in all professions. You think about, like, the New York Football Giants, they won the Super Bowl last year. They have a coach who routinely gives them feedback. So there's lots of sports analogies you could make, but there's also the connection to what we do as professionals. Sorry, that might have been a controversial comment for some. I felt urgency to make it. Some people in the back know why. So, so really with this model, some people, yeah, a few. Mark and I are good. So, so really when we focus on this, it's really how do we help develop the teachers that we have? We have really strong teachers. And for the vast majority of our teachers, this new model and professional development should be simultaneous. We're now have rolled out a new online system called It's My Learning Plan, and it's not surprising, they have the evaluation components and the professional development components on the same screen because they really should be directly connected. So the best part of my job really so far has been I've been in every single school, in many schools multiple times, helping teachers work on goals, and I want to compliment our staff because they've taken extreme care and intelligence, and they've been absolutely wonderful about trying to take in, okay, here's a new model, here's my responsibility, and here's something I really want to work on, here's what's going to make a difference for kids. I've met with, you know, and worked with principals, whole staffs, small groups like the OTPT group, had a really exciting session to figure out how they could improve their professional practice. So we've really been trying to implement this model in a way where our teachers will get the support they need and the feedback they need to improve, which directly impacts the kids in our district. And I think some folks are going to talk a little bit about Part D, which is managing time effectively, because we all know we don't have Rafael Nadal's money to have daily feedback. It'd be great, but how are we managing the multiple demands that we have as administrators and supporting our teachers?
Great. So Fay, I believe, first?
So to follow up just what Mike was saying, as an administrator, one of the things that I believe and the other student services administrators agree with this is the importance of being in the schools. Sometimes when you're an administrator, you can find yourself spending way too much time in meetings or at a table with other administrators. And for us to really do our work effectively, it's very important to be in the schools. Other than, as Mike is saying, to be directly observing teachers and seeing people do their work so we can provide meaningful feedback, I see that as a two-way street. If I'm in the buildings, and if I'm in classes and in meetings with personnel, I'm also getting feedback from those people, from the people who are in the classes doing the work so that I, as a director, can do meaningful, have meaningful leadership, to be able to know where are we doing a great job, and where do I need to just continue support there, or where are there areas that people are feeling unsupported? They're doing very, very hard work, and they need leadership to be supportive and to help know that somebody is real, somebody is really there, not just somewhere in an office sending emails, but real and there. So one of the things that I have done, I've scheduled routine walk-in talks with principals that I don't want to just go into a building and sit there in another meeting, but we're going to be walking around the schools, going into classrooms, seeing students learning, seeing that directly happening so that I have a real direct feel for what's going on in the classes. Being in meetings, being in routine meetings in all the schools, and doing that, here I think it says, to increase the frequency on the average of two hours a week. Well, I wasn't here last year, so that's pretty easy for me to do, but I know that I probably won't be in the schools every day, but close to every day of the week if I don't, I've scheduled it so that I start many of my days in the schools so I don't get caught in a meeting, that I'm going first thing in the morning to the schools or at some time during the day. So that's something that we're committed to. We'll be observing the teachers on a frequent basis, not so that it's just part of a valuation system, but so that people can, teachers can feel that they welcome administrators into their classroom, to ask a question, to showcase something. We've said to teachers, if you have something exciting going on, if it's second graders having written a story and you want to... going on, if it's second graders having written a story and you want to have me come there, please just send an email and say Tuesday at 9:00 a.m. and I will be there. So we're doing that on a routine basis, both myself as well as the other student services administrators, time in schools. So, and I think that that will really help have a direct tie-in to the whole of educator evaluation system.
Thank you, Fay. Does anyone else want to jump in?
I wasn't initially planning on talking to you, but I think, but I think there was a, anyway, I will. So, you know, when I, when I thought about this goal and in talking with Fay, you know, it really speaks to that, you know, principals I know are all with the best intentions. They often get distracted and pulled away from different pieces. And so this will really give us an opportunity to really structure our time well and make sure that we are in classrooms. And it's not just, you know, principals are in classrooms now, but it will be a different focus and a different kind of lens that we'll be looking at, and then providing teachers with the kinds of feedback that will help them to improve their instruction and enable us to have a conversation about what's happening in classrooms. And so it will require that the evaluators or the principals and administrators will have to be more planful in organizing their time, and so that they can be in all the places that they need to for the scheduled amounts of observations, whatever is determined ultimately in the long run.
Great. Thank you, Lisa.
I'm not going to go too far because I'm speaking.
Thank you. Mike?
So just briefly, talk about E, which is All Leaders Responsible for Evaluation, will adhere to the rollout plan for this year. So it is the first year of implementation. I was on a webinar today with the state around that, and I think there's similar challenges lots of places around timelines, but the way the superintendent has positioned my role is really to support the folks who are doing the bulk of the evaluations and our observations, because we have folks who do observations who are not evaluators, to make it reasonable and work it out so people know exactly, they concretize how much time it's going to take and how to support them with tips, and also how to norm the practice of what do observations look like. And we're doing that, some of our district work, but I'll also be in the schools supporting folks with that. I think Lisa, Monica will speak.
So in regards to this goal, it relates directly to our goal number five, and to implement the Massachusetts Educator Evaluation Model. So, in order to support us with being more open to having more visitors come into our classrooms, because teachers are used to that, but being able to provide each other with quality feedback, we have a goal, Five B, use of district priority elements as a basis for collaborative teamwork. So three times this year, my staff will engage in instructional rounds. And this was also talked about in Goal Area One, Two as well, and it's amazing how these goals just overlap with each other. Also, too, when we think about the fundamental instructional practices, that the work that we're doing in our evaluation system is just reinforcing what is needed and how we can move forward to continuously improve what we do. Then also, too, we also have Five C, share with staff quality, high-quality feedback that informs our decisions around professional development, and as well as it speaks to our strengths, to what we're able to do very well. And so as we go through this process, a cycle of inquiry, a cycle of improvement, we talk about what we're doing well, and then from there, we talk about what we can work on. And the great thing about our new evaluation system is that as principals, as administrators, we all have a part in this. We're all held accountable.
So I have to confess, this isn't formally part of the Palom School Improvement Plan yet. However, my school council and I met, and we talked about this last week at length, and so I have given them a proposal to consider for our next meeting in terms of adding a goal number six, which really focuses on the implementation plan for the new educator evaluator system and how it will play out in Palom. And I can speak for all of my colleagues in saying that all the staff in all the buildings were trained at the beginning of the school year, and we have Mike to thank for his unending support. And I think that this year will be in this area, all roads will lead to Mike, and we're very happy to have him on board in helping us with the implementation of this new system. And I can say that we had a very interesting conversation in our staff meeting today, in which we were talking about developing student learning goals and how it links directly to data, and we really got into some of the data that we had from MCAS and talking about open responses, and this is an area to work on. And some of my teachers saying, this should be a whole school team goal. And so teachers really can see the value and how it can support them and their students in growing and learning with this process. All staff have been trained in My Learning Plan, and so we're really, right now it feels a little awkward. We're kind of fumbling around trying to figure out all the pieces and how it works. And I know that Mike has some plans and how he can support us with some models in that area, which will be very much appreciated. And I'm also mindful that I'm allowing time for my staff in my staff meetings and carving out some time so that they are feeling supported, and we have time to talk about what this all means and what it will look like as it plays out throughout the year. And so, you know, we're understanding it is a process. We're giving ourselves some time to think, ask questions, and then move forward, one piece at a time. And I, you know, ultimately, we really see that students will benefit from the feedback that is provided to teachers, which will result in improved instruction and improved student achievement. So it's an interesting, exciting process, and I think that we were going to learn a lot from this new system.
Thank you, Lisa. Mike?
So actually, two things. One is that if any folks are interested, Dr. Gawande is speaking for free at Harvard, two weeks from tomorrow night, and I'm going with a group of, there's a couple other folks, teachers and administrators in the district, so you're welcome to join us. And the other is that this is a multi-year goal because it's a multi-year rollout. So we have what we have for this year that's mandated by state law. And then next year, we will include, we're supposed to pilot multiple measures of student achievement as part of it, and also student feedback and student surveys. So it phases out over time, phases in, excuse me, over time. So I just, when we come back to this, a year from now, we may be doing a very similar presentation, and the top may be the same, and the lettered points may be different because it is a multi-year rollout.
Go Larry Four is utilize data tools and analyses to improve classroom instruction,
student learning, teacher administrator evaluation, and student engagement and participation. Again, this may seem a little far off from when you think about what you're doing in terms of supporting kids, but there's lots of research, most notably a book that talked about, identified the high-achieving schools within the Chicago public school system, so large urban school system. And they looked for consistent threads. So they said, what are the schools that are doing the best, and then what's the same about them? Right? And what they found consistently was two things, well, multiple things, but one of the things was around data. They all were using data to improve instruction to a school. Another one will segue to Goal Five when Dr. Guevara speaks around community engagement and how important that is as well. There were multiple things that this survey's found. But, so when we think about data, it can look at numbers, it can, right, you can think about some graphs I showed you last week that seem maybe not directly related to kids, but our use of data is directly related to kids. Our use of data helps inform what we're actually doing with kids, what programs are effective, what programs we may need to think about differently. So it really is on the kid level, even though it seems very adult-centered. So I think Derek's going to start us off, talking a little bit about B, which is around data routines to monitor progress. And I'll get the slides up for you.
So I think it would be fair to say that, I think the first thing that I saw up there was discipline, and discipline's an interesting word. I would say that certainly, discipline, what discipline means and what it looks like in the elementary school is somewhat probably vastly different from what it looks like in the middle school and high school. And I sort of know that, having worked at the high school for a bunch of years myself. So again, we have a program that we've been using, and I believe at this point, all of the schools are using this program. We have a program that's called Educator's Handbook, and this is actually a slide from the Educator's Handbook website. Here's what I would say, you know, it's easy, just punch in Educator's Handbook, you can go online, you can Google it, there's a website that you can take a look at. And I would be more than happy to sit down and chat with folks at any given point about the whole program. The function of the program's pretty straightforward. There's clearly, with all the PBAS work that we're doing in schools, there's still going to be times when kids have challenging behaviors, right? And so we want to make sure that we are measuring those challenging behaviors. We want to make sure we're analyzing those challenging behaviors, and we'll make sure that we're looking at, making sure that we are putting things in place to help kids who have challenging behaviors. We also want to make sure we communicate and talk with parents about these behaviors. So again, what happens in school, elementary school, for example, is that there's certainly days where kids have moments and things happen. Do we always keep track of every single thing when there's a moment? No. But if there's continued behaviors, if there's trends that we want to track, we want to make sure that we document that stuff. And the program Educator's Handbook is gold dust, right? Because it really does a whole bunch of stuff for you. And again, I'll be welcome to sit and chat with people. It gives you all sorts of data, graphs, charts, that allows us to really quickly sort of get a good look at what's going on in a classroom for a kid. I'll give you a good example. Several years ago, we were using the program, and we quite quickly figured out that the way that we were trying to help the kids during the nine till ten slot was not working. We, as adults, in terms of the transitions that were taking place between services and math and other, it just wasn't working. And it took us a while, it took us using this data to figure it out. So again, it's a great tool. I know there's some controversy and there's some stress about, you know, collecting data on discipline matters. We're going to do it, because we think it's the right thing to do, and we're going to use it wisely, and we're going to use it to make sure that we help kids. Again, I think all of the schools, I believe, are using it at this point. Again, this is a great tool here, Mike's showing you this. And this is similarly all the schools. We worked on this a couple of years ago. There's a whole bunch of behaviors in schools where teachers are going to manage it in the classroom, right? Calling out, refusing to work. Someone calls it in class, are you going to write this in Educator's Handbook? No. Someone calls it in class 12 times in the last two days or the next two weeks, or whatever. Sure, they may document it, because at some point, we want to figure out what the heck's going on that's causing this kid to call it in class so much. There's other behaviors, office managed, they're much more up the street of the administrator, right? Are we going to document those things? You better believe we're going to document it, because we want to make sure that we're keeping some sort of record or understanding of what's going on in our building with our kids. Pretty straightforward stuff, again. What's the bottom line and why is the purpose? We want to help our kids. We want to help our kids, again, to make sure that they're sitting in their seats, doing their work, getting the education that they need. If we don't do that, we're doing everyone a disservice. Straightforward.
Thank you, Derek. I think Betsy, and then...
I'm going back to, I go back to the one before, it was like around grades, so monitoring grades. So, in the middle school, we had this problem. We were at the DuFour and DuFour Conference last year, and we're sitting there, and they were speaking to us. Everybody else disappeared, and they were talking to us, and they helped us think about this. We have all these kids who end up having low grades, low Cs, Ds, Fs, not because they don't grasp the material, but just the kinds of things you heard Mark say. The studentship skills weren't developed, and they didn't have the support to really do the homework, do the classwork, be timely with all of that. So what did we do? For years, we kind of left it up to each individual teacher to try to take care of their 80 kids and invite kids after school to come in for some extra help. That didn't really work that well. So last year, we added Vela after school. Still inviting kids in, worked a little bit better, but we still, we weren't anywhere close. So DuFour and DuFour talked about a strategy that we've adopted this year, and we're going to give it a shot. We present it to all the kids. We have an academic intervention. We have an expectation that kids can have grades at a C or higher in our school. As soon as a child gets to the point where on their progress report, they have a C minus or lower, we're going to kick into a bunch of steps here to help them get the help that they need. Okay? So, what we do is we get a C minus report, we're going to run it every two weeks. This is going to give us really, really very interesting and helpful data. Step one, you've got a C minus someplace on there, we're going to contact families, the teachers are going to do this. We're going to do the same thing we've always done, stay after school with us, let's get these, let's get you caught up. This is all good. If after two weeks, that's not working, we're going to go to step two. Now, the guidance counselor is involved, okay? And the guidance counselor is going to be contracting with kids, working with families, get that triangle of student, family, and school working together. And we're going to now make a specific plan to stay after school. If after three weeks, that's not working, we're going to go to a next level of intervention, which happens during the school day or at our more structured after-school Vela program. So during advisory, during a study hall, or after school. Still doesn't work, we're going to step four, we're going to do multiple things, still doesn't work. At that point, we can, at any point here, we can do, we can move toward a child's study team. But at this point, we're definitely going to move toward a child's study team, which is where we invite some additional people into the conversation to help us think about how we can help this student. Okay, so guess, three weeks into the school year, we ran our first C minus report. What do you think? How many people, how many kids? 240 kids in each class, how many kids do you think had a C minus or lower?
Thirty.
Thirty per class or total?
Total.
Total. Anybody higher than that, lower than that? What do you think? Seventy-seven in seventh grade, seventy-five in eighth grade. Okay. Now, what we used to do is we wouldn't really panic until about halfway through the trimester, and then we'd start like putting the pressure on. At that point, right, these guys are like, uh-huh. At that point, these guys now have 10, 15, 20 outstanding pieces of work. They're done, you know? Even to get them caught up, they are so discouraged, so burned out and run down, we can't get them back. So we're trying to intervene soon and go get them. So, two weeks later, we still had 90 kids, about 90 kids out of our roughly 150 that were on there again. Fifty-six, fifty-five of them or so came off, and about 45 came on. So, we're going to track this data throughout. We're going to be looking for patterns among kids. We're going to be looking for patterns among our intervention, which interventions are working and which aren't. And hopefully, we're going to also keep kids from feeling like they don't have anybody talking to them until midway or the week before the end of the trimester. So, we'll keep you posted on how it works.
Thank you. Monica?
So, that is amazing, just to hear what's going on at our schools. And so, at Fort River, what we're working on this year is something a little bit different, but to incorporate our families as a part of the child's study team process. And so, what we like to do, if we notice that a child is struggling, let's say our tier-two interventions are not working, and we're thinking, okay, we need to move on to a tier-three, well, we want parents to go with us and to be a part of that conversation with us too as well. So what I do have in front of you all, and I can provide a copy of this, is what we call our solution sheet. And so what this speaks to is the strength of the child, the resources that we've already put in place to support the child, as well as what's going on in the classroom, what the family is doing at home, and also what else can we do to support the student. And so in this way, we also have identified goals too as well. We can keep track, we can monitor progress, so that we can ensure that students are being supported, that they don't fall through the cracks, and that our goals are measurable. And if students are not making the progress that they need to make, then we can come back to the table and talk about what our next steps will be. And so we're excited about that piece, taking data monitoring, progress monitoring, to the next level.
Thank you, Monica.
Sure. So you can see that that definitely blended, the comments definitely blended into C, which is around data routines and tracking systems we created to monitor the progress of general and special education students. So I'll just say briefly, and then I know Fay and Ian will come up. So, right now, people are doing a lot of manual labor around these data fronts, and our systems are set up much better to look at groups of kids over time than individual kids and multiple measures of assessment over time. So, one of the things that we're working on and looking at, along with Doug Slaughter's not here and Ian, we're trying to take a look at what technology programs are there that might assist us in that work. So I've talked to other districts, and on Monday, we're going to visit another district that's using a program that they seem to have a lot of success with, in particular around the response intervention system, because we want to make sure that our 10th grade teachers have full access to lots of data so they get a historical trend about each of our students who have been in our district for that amount of time. And so instead of looking at a long spreadsheet with multiple students, we might be able to look at one student over a long period of time, which is a little beyond our efficient capabilities right now. So we are working hard on trying to think of what systems can make our data routines even stronger. And I know Fay's going to talk a little bit about special education.
Thank you. So I'm delighted to hear that Mike is looking at these systems, because I keep going to Mike and saying, so I need to have the data, and I need it not just a whole bunch of numbers in front of me, but I need it collected and organized and giving me meaningful information about how our special about how our special education students are doing. I need to look at grade levels, I need to look at the multiple measures of achievement. We know generally, students who are identified as special education students are scoring lower than some of their non-disabled peers. But that doesn't mean that we're not going to strive towards meaningful progress for them. And we need to be able to look at what are our programs, what are our materials, what are our resources, what is the access to the curriculum for our students to make this progress and track that over time. So hopefully, within a year, I'll be able to come back here and say, so let's look at this. This is our special education students in this grade level and this is the area where they're struggling, but we can then identify in what strands, in what specific academic areas within a larger subject area, are there weaknesses, are there strengths? Hopefully, we can then build our programs to kind of have it so that their strengths help address the identified weaknesses and help our teachers then know instructional techniques and strategies to build upon that. So, I keep going to Mike, I want this data, I want it, I need it to be visual and I need to be able to show it to teachers, I need to show it to all of you, I need to make informed program decisions based upon that. So you will see that coming really soon. The other thing, and I think Ian's going to speak a little bit more about this, for the students who are not identified as special education students, I kind of gulped when Mark Jackson talked about 25% of the high school students being special education students. One of the things that we really want to do is look at our ITR, RTI model and look at the interventions that are in place and the outcomes for those before a student gets identified as special education and looking for interventions that can make a difference in the whole general education system so that we can have more differentiated instructional models that really make a difference and address all students' needs. So the only, you can get differentiated instruction prior to becoming a special education student. And so when we get a referral for a special education evaluation, I want to be able to look at what interventions have been tried and what is the success of which of those interventions, what helped and what didn't help, so that we have a starting place. Ian?
I think actually, I think you covered it, Faye.
Well, we work very closely together because they're very linked.
Thank you, Faye. So Mike is just going to finish with a statement around our next moves.
Yep, so currently, Dr. Cohen, Dr. Stith and I are involved in Data Wise course via Harvard and kind of it's train-the-trainer model, so we're all getting trained, we met today actually about one of our first, a couple of our first assignments, I should say. And then, as we build our literacy, bring it to district instructional leadership team and then back to the schools. So it's really a methodology that helps us take a measured approach towards using data to make it really meaningful for teachers. It's really a process, not the administrative process we're working on, but it's really a process more to model for teachers, how to look at data and how to make instructional decisions that are based on the data we have for kids.
Thanks, Mike. Okay, last goal area, Dr. Givada.
Last but not least.
No, of course not.
Goal area number five, create a systemic, strength-based approach to family and community engagement, strengthening connections to families, students, and community partners, an approach that leads to gains in student achievement. I'm going to read because I'm a little bit, I have a cold and I want to make sure I hit all the pieces I want to. So research gathered over the past 40 years suggests family engagement is one of the strongest predictors of children's success in school. And over the past few years, with this solid research base in hand, we've seen a sense of urgency from many stakeholders and experts in the field to move family engagement from an event-driven approach to a strategy that's embraced as a critical component of whole school reform. The definition of family engagement has evolved from a limited focus on a parent's role as a supporter of their child's learning at home, which is important, to a broader definition that recognizes the multiple ways that parents are engaged, at home, at school, and in the community, and not only in their own child's education, but in the efforts to improve the quality of education for all children. We now know from the research that engaging families and community partners is an essential ingredient to the improvement of schools. And I just want to publicly say that I'm just delighted and we're all very excited that this goal has made it into the district improvement plan and the school improvement plans. And we really value the fact that we now have a lot more knowledge and research after we spent the week in Harvard with Dr. Ferguson, with Karen Mapp, with all the other fabulous folks that brought forth just this invaluable research, just to prove what we already knew, that we need to work in partnership with our families, parents, guardians. You know, that's the last piece of the picture that we have to get right. In terms of the, one of the first ones that we want to comment on is that by June 2013, the Family Engagement Action Team will have engaged parents, guardians, and a community building process focused on multiple ways of supporting academic growth. And I just want to state that this action team has met. We have fabulous people in it, we're going to recruit some community members, so the initial steering committee has met. We've already looked at the different goals and we've already began outlining this plan and we're very, very excited about it. I believe, who's coming up?
I think, Nick, if he's here, Monica. Nick's coming back in.
Nick's coming back.
Nick, Monica, and I don't know if Faye wanted to say one brief thing too. So, Nick, do you know where we are? It's okay. I don't know if you have a sequence.
Nick and I are a part of the District Family Engagement Action Team and we are all about action, I must say. So we had an opportunity to meet at Fort River and we had a real discussion about where we are as a district and how can we move ourselves forward. And sometimes, real discussions make you say ouch a little bit. So I was feeling that pinch to say we need to do a little bit more. So Nick, you want to speak?
Sure.
Doing work always.
Yeah, I think one of the things that we start to talk about as a Wildwood staff, and this really directly relates to the Ron Ferguson conferences, so this is the time of parent conferences. And so, in his work, he's been emphasizing that when speaking to families, you're just being very explicit about, here are the things that, you have goals for your child, here are the areas that what we're working on, here's what we're doing, and here's what you can do at home. And that kind of tripod in a way where you have family goals, you have the teacher goals, and as children get older, you're inviting the student to create goals. So just how teachers can have those kind of direct conversations. I think the focus of our work as a committee is really looking at our community and saying, okay, which families, which segments of our population don't feel welcome in our school or feel like they're not as engaged in this process of their education, as well as recognizing that every family cares deeply about their children and wants their child to be successful in education. And how can we reach out, how can we partner with all families in AMERIS? I think part of our conversation that we felt was very exciting that ties into the community partnerships that Marie was referencing is, so what can our community, how can they be a part of this conversation? That if you really look at the resources we have in AMERIS, the word I've been using is inexcusable for us to really work with families in this way and how can we partner with our resources.
So the one thing, as Nick said, that all families have in common is they want their children to succeed. So we have not gotten this right from the school's perspective and I'm just going to call it like that. And so, the framework of parent engagement is not outreach, is we're not saving anybody. This is a strength-based approach that we have to meet each other. And so with that essence, we need to go beyond the people we see every day in the schools, which we love and we count on and they're very valuable, but we want to make an effort to go into other areas of the community that have, for whatever reason, and Nick mentioned some, not feeling welcome or don't have time or have, or think that we have their kids' best interests at hand culturally in terms of, and they don't need to come in, or whichever way, whatever their past experiences have been. So we're doing a very coordinated effort to go and meet folks where they're at. We already have had a very successful meeting with one apartment complex in particular, but we're going to be going to families, we're going to be meeting in their living rooms or wherever they want to meet us, with our outreach van or whichever way. And we want to hear and we want to use that parent engagement, parent guardian engagement community rubric that we've mentioned in the past. And we want to hear from all families, not just the school council, not just the members of the PGO. How are we rating in everybody's mind, in everybody's reality? So not just the people we see every day, which we love seeing, but why are people not here? And, you know, so we're very excited and there's quite a comprehensive list of things we're going to be doing. We look forward to coming back and reporting on some of those fabulous things we're going to be doing. Faye, did you want to say one piece?
Just one.
Yeah, yeah, and then I have one more.
It's already 8:30, so I'm going to do this very quickly, but although not part of the Family Engagement Action Team, Marta and I work very, very closely and with our population and student services, we are, this year, really taking on a commitment to a culture and climate within the Special Education Department that we're partnering with families and we're taking a real collaborative approach. Our students, we know if they're going to make progress, it takes a village and that village must include the family. And if families can't come to us, we'll go to them. We are going to make it happen. And in special education, we're fortunate enough to have a special education parent advisory committee and I've been meeting with them and talking with them and they're on board to partner with us to really make this happen in a positive, meaningful way to have parents welcome working with us. Even though their lives are very stressful right now, we want to help bring that stress down and have them know that we're all on the team together.
Thank you, very much, Faye.
Another piece that's within this goal is the youth culture. And that is, what letter? Hold on. So, G, right? A cohesive plan to address needs related to youth culture will be established by March 2013. And part of the Achievement Gap Institute from, at Harvard and Ron Ferguson, is how we need to be well-versed in youth culture. So to quote him, "We know young people value success in the domain of academic achievement, but they value acceptance and importance among peers also. When the quality of performance in school and popularity with peers must be traded off against each other, the desire for social acceptance often comes a great deal of weight and reduces devotion to excellence." So it's about the peer culture knowing, and one of his projects, the conspiracy to succeed, precisely addresses this. So going to all students, seeing what, you know, what students value, what they don't value, what is a barrier to their success, and, you know, identify leaders and work with those leaders to be able to say, yeah, well, it is cool to achieve. And yes, well, there are these options. I think Mark wanted to say, Mark, did you want to say something about that?
So... So actually, Mike, when we do this, I'm going to go one, two, five, one, two, and then four, five. Okay, and then I'll come back to three at the end, right? So can we just go back to the first one? Yeah. So, for those of you who've been either hanging around middle school the last two years or the high school last year...
Screen it to.
That's it.
Technology. Excellent. Thank you.
Because all you could see was out of 10, you didn't know how many. So if you've been in the middle school for the last two years, the high school last year, the notion of the social norms campaign, you've probably seen in evidence, right? So, when I talk to psychologists, people who do these things for a living, they really settle the question that social norms as an instrument that can move communities, that can actively shape communities, is well-established, right? So I'm just going to stipulate that this works. So, SPIFI, Strategic Partnership for Families and Youth, SPIFI.
Something like that.
Wow.
Something, right? So they partnered with us, they've organized the surveying that's done of all our kids, we just did it last week, Mickey organized it. So we're into year two. So I just have two examples, this one and the next one, Mike, right? Just if you haven't been in the high school or the middle school, to have a sense of the ways in which the posters are created, these are distillations of patterns of responses that kids have made in the survey. And our themes last year were largely school climate and substance abuse. So this is my favorite. There's an open-ended part at the end where we just, Marissa Hebbel and her folks just distilled this, very visually attractive and it really goes to the point that kids, that kids both are resourceful and they have a desire to be both identified with their peer group, but not entirely, right? So if we could just, so just if you can hold the notion of the social norms campaign ahead, Mike, and if you could just jump to Ron's two slides, right? So, last March, Ron comes to the district, we're in this room right here, 50 middle school kids, I'm sorry, 25 middle school kids, 25 high school kids, few of us adults sitting in the back. Ron's engaging the kids. And I have it on video, but we didn't give the microphone to the kids, so you can't, you can only hear what Ron's saying, you can't hear what the kids are saying in response to them. So, so he said, "I interviewed 1,400 middle school and high school kids around the country and when I asked them, what do kids do in your school to achieve status? What are the behaviors they engage in to acquire standing with their peer group? This is what I found." So he stops and the kids read it, you could hear a pin drop. So, for those of you watching at home, it's essentially act like a knucklehead, right? That's what's summarized here. So antisocial behavior or academically disruptive behavior. So then he says, he goes to the next slide, he said, "Suppose you could set the rules, you were king or queen for the day and you could make a determination of what the high status behaviors would be in this particular culture. What would you assert? Same collection of kids, if they were in charge and they could make a definitive statement, they would say, work hard, go to class, do the right thing, be nice to people, be supportive, don't tease." And so, it got really quiet in this room after he cut this discrepancy. And so, he just, he kind of sat in silence and very slowly, he said, "So, how can you help me make sense of this?" And, you know, two minutes went by and the kids, and the hands started to go up. And what he elicited from kids was just this kind of collection of suggestions of how it is that kids were willing to not just intellectualize, but actually operationalize a commitment to having them and their peer group be on the side of right. So, it not only was kind of a compelling moment for the kids, but for the rest of the adults sitting in the back, it was a memorable moment because it went to this question, that behind the veil of peer culture, what's latent inside of kids is this desire to be on the side of right. And what they can't figure out is how to get there without severing their connections to their peers, right? So very quickly, the line of thinking that coalesced was that that's the job of the adults. The job of the adults is to facilitate the kids in trying to figure out how it is that they can act on the basis of what they truly believe and not fall prey to what's conventional and what's easy. So, so the idea that kind of surfaced from these two experiences, our history with the social norms campaign and Ron's presentation with the kids, was this. If we could go back to the middle slide, Mike, sorry, right. So this is what we propose. We have Ron's findings, right? Those are the headings of the two slides that I looked at. What we distilled from this is the kids have a latent desire to be on the side of right that's worth, that's worth our investing in trying to tap and encourage. We have two cohorts of kids in the building. I think you've seen the work of the social norms campaign, I mean, the school climate control kids, the Ask Me campaign. So we're into the second generation of those kids and the MCNS and class and cohort. So the group of kids that both have gone to the conferences, went to the conference this year, have been in the class, are in the class, the N of that group continues to grow. So we have strong adult leaderships with both kids. So here's the connection that we're trying to make. So what if we survey around themes that go to the issue of making it easier for kids to act in a way that's more closely identified with what they believe? We post on it and then, and this is what we didn't do last year, and then we, with the help of these two student groups, this student leadership, we designed school-wide activities that'll bring a third dimension to the posting, right? So we already, we can stipulate that the posting has, the posters have some influence, have some significant influence. If we could accompany those with kid-designed, kid-led activities, not in the big splash, you put 850 kids in the auditorium, but quiet, maybe more passive kinds of things to accentuate those things, we have an attempt at driving them deeper into the culture and hopefully unleashing kids' ability to be, to conduct themselves in line with who they want to be. So the themes I just want to highlight for you, I'm on the second bullet down in the right column under plan, right? So, you've heard effective efforts in a... So you've heard effective effort in a number of places, smart is not something you are smart, it's something you can get, right? But the next two, the help-seeking and help-accepting are corollaries of that. So the number of kids who hide out and don't want to show their ignorance in class because they either feel like they're going to be ridiculed or they won't be able to stand up in peer culture. So encouraging them for making help-seeking a high-status set of behaviors and help-accepting. When the teacher says, "Can you come and see me after school?", we don't see that as a demotion, we see that as a heck of an opportunity, right? So promoting help-seeking and help-accepting as practical features or practical manifestations of effective effort are one of the themes that we're going to survey, post and try to build activities around. So that's the, to use Nick's phrase, that's the theory of change that we're operating on to make a run at youth culture. And lastly, Ron said at the conference this summer, he said he can't find any good youth culture examples in all the schools he works with.
Yeah.
Ding 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 ding, right? So we said to the adults that are running these two groups, we're having the kids write to Ron mid-year and tell them what we're up to and what we're doing because I want to bring them back and show him. Thanks.
So just to end, we just came back, one minute came back from Phoenix with the students, with the MCAS students, and they're going to come and present, so we're going to see this firsthand and we're very excited. And they're already talking about perhaps having conspiracy to succeed as a theme.
For two thousand thirteen.
For two thousand thirteen, so.
Excellent. Thank you, Marta. So two last comments before we, love to hear questions. One is we are working on using Ron Ferguson's visual regarding the movement that it takes, it's kind of the concept that Fay was, I think Fay referenced, it takes a village, that we, we as a school system are focusing on multiple areas of improvement so that we can leverage the change that we'd like to see in our students, the improved outcomes for all students, and being realistic that it also takes lots of work with families, lots of work with community and with employers. So we're talking about a wider scope than what we traditionally look at in terms of how do we affect change within a school. So what we will be working on over the next few weeks is a model that would be interactive so that the, the outer ring of this visual, you'd be able to click on and actually see the initiatives that we have underway within our schools and we'll be able to identify and also have like hyperlinks, the right lingo, to the, to the corresponding and the backup literature around the different initiatives that we have underway or the research base. And then we can also identify where are areas that we really need to step up, whether that be with our community partners or with families or with our business community who, again, are in strong partnership with our schools. So we will be bringing this back in front of you to be able to see the holistic picture because I think connecting the dots for people is critically important. It's critically important for all of us to be able to make sense of a very comprehensive effort to reform schools and at times, you know, it can be our minds want to go to the place that there's just a lot of different discreet things and that is not the case. It is a cohesive movement. And I think the last thing I'd love to say is that I'm incredibly honored to work with an amazing group of leaders in our system who every day work together to determine what are the, the goals that we're going to put in place and then they take it back to the school level and make it happen, which is unbelievably challenging and powerful. And we have amazing faculty and staff who every single day work incredibly hard to actualize what we put in place and, and feed what we put in place so that we make a difference for our students. So thank you all for making the linkages tonight, so.
Yes, thank you. Very quickly, to concur with Maria, your enthusiasm and your energy, which I realize is rapidly dissipating, is really infectious and I thank you for staying and staying a little bit longer to answer some questions. As members of the committee, we talked about a question, a follow-up and a comment. Shabazz, would you care to begin, please?
Thank you very much. I'm a strong believer in the four-to-one kind of idea and reinforcement because of limitations of time. Let me just say good, amazing to the cube or to the fourth power so that we can move on. The concerns, the questions, the criticisms that I would raise here, I want to stress is not about you and the daily practice of what you do. We know you care about our children, we know you're doing great, amazing work. It's about what we're articulating in this plan is the question. And so I have a few things, no particular order, but I will put them out there to you. One is in goal area four, the language in item C, tracking systems for a district under a consent decree around tracking, we should not use that kind of language. I know it's not what it's meant, but get rid of it. It should say data, something like data use strategies. So we're talking about the data routines of putting in, inputting this data, but then we're talking about what are the strategies for how we can use this rich set of data. But we are not putting tracking systems back in the schools of Amherst. Second of all, the issue of the looking back at the previous district improvement plan, which I began looking at prior to running for a seat on this school committee and have been looking at consistently, there was a group, a goal area two in the previous plan, create a safe, positive learning environment for staff, for students and staff, that directly emanates from our mission statement of providing high-quality education for all students. But then very specifically in goal C of that goal two area, it, there was develop and implement strategies for achieving equal access to educational and other opportunities regardless of class. Now that was a very important and fundamental statement that I don't see as clear-cut in this articulation. I'm not sure how well we did, first of all, on it in this previous district improvement plan. That's something we'll evaluate, that's something we can certainly struggle around. But, but I think the question of where are we specifically talking about the strategies for equal access to educational and opportunities that across this differentiated level of diverse learners is what's very important to me. I've made no secret of the state, corresponding state superintendent rubric standard that I am most concerned about is Roman numeral one B three. The principal will identify for you all, her staff, a variety of teaching strategies and practices that are effective with diverse learners is what is very central to my concern being here on this school committee. I push for that. I will be evaluating for that. I will be a thorn, if you wish, on that, but the, or a blessing. But the key thing with this is, is that how are we articulating that in this plan? I don't say you've got to have language such as in goal area two C of the previous one, explicit like that, but where is it embedded? Where are we planning for this over the coming period is what I am centrally concerned about. Also in goal area five, I know we're trying to get at some of that, some of these concerns and that, but that's engagement with the community, with the family. I love the strength-based approach, but that is not the same as talking about the teaching practices, the teaching practices that are going to deal with diverse learners. And I'm not just interested in race and class. I'm absolutely interested in other genetic, in real genetic issues, right? Such as the, the question of executive function not being as developed as we might for, as we might wish it all is for our fourteen-year-olds or our thirteen-year-old, that it's not where we would like it to be, but how do we deal with them as they are? With whatever those attention deficit issues are, with whatever those issues of executive function development is. Are we going to write bad IEP plans and have twenty-five percent? Are we going to find other ways, as was mentioned by Dr. Brady, to look at our response to intervention and look at on the front end, how can we address these issues without it necessarily meaning that we need to have twenty-five percent of our incoming students designated with a special education IEP? So those are the things that I am significantly concerned about. There are some other items, but I'll close with that.
Thank you, Shabazz. Kathy?
Oh, okay. This is fantastic. I'm assuming a lot of the things that are in here have been done in the past, maybe informally, and this is more of a structured framework as far as teams and the overlapping of teams, and I'm thrilled to see the parent goal because I find that is very important, which kind of goes along with the positive behavior. I do believe that's a major component because that's like a foundation. If we can't provide that, then how can they exceed at their education? My one question is, the middle school does have that C minus as a criteria. I'm just wondering how the elementary schools might be, you know, using criteria for that intervention procedure. I don't know if that's been.
So can, let me ask, because I want to make sure, because I'm happy to respond to things as they come up. So I think in terms of elementary schools, I'm not sure who'd want to answer for the group. Nick?
Sure.
Oh, sorry, Nick.
Should the mic go?
Sure.
Yes, please.
So I think in the, at the elementary school, this goes back to the collaborative teams and the RTI work that was referenced, the response to intervention work. So it means that you have your classroom teachers sitting down as a grade-level team with intervention teachers and looking at specific formative data as well as MCAS is the one point in time. So it would be looking at the reading level, it would be looking at the math end-of-unit data that they have, it would be looking at MCAS, it would be looking at what's called the map testing that's now done. So we're in the process now, it was done in the spring and we're in the process of having that done now. So it's the formative assessments as opposed to the grades that are also formative assessments in the middle school way. Does that answer the question?
Yeah, it gives me a better sense.
Yeah, so we actually look at it all together and then our intervention staff, what they do is actually put it in order in terms of, okay, let's prioritize the needs of our students so they in the same way have kind of designated, this is the point, the kids who are below this mark, we're the ones, they're the ones we're really concerned about, so let's make a plan.
Thank you, Nick.
Before we go on to Rick, Maria, give Maria a chance to respond to Shabazz.
Yeah, if I could. When we were looking at the district improvement plan in the past and we were looking at where we are now, much of our kind of focus has become, how do you ensure that we're putting in place strategies, curriculum, resources that are able to be differentiated for all students? So we wanted to make sure that the systems that we put in place are monitoring how every single child is doing in terms of access to curriculum, benefit from that curriculum. That doesn't mean we're not going to look at things like barriers that are in place with policies, which we do believe is still a critical area for us to review. However, all of the goal areas and the corresponding or underlying resources that we used are evidence-based across multiple populations of students. We have Dr. Brady in place who's also talking to us about how do we ensure that we have a full continuum, that triangle is how you're meeting the needs of all students, some students and a very small population of students. Once we get much better at an aligned curriculum and using that data to intervene, we expect that our child study team process will become much more structured so that we will be able to meet the needs of a more, of more varied group of students prior to needing that specialized instruction. In terms of goals around equity and climate, we were really, I think cautious of not having goals that are specific to equity work because much of our conversation and our conversation with Dr. Ferguson, it's about everything we do every day needs to have the lens of equity. It cannot be an add-on. And if we add on goals, it's, it gives the suggestion that that one individual goal or strategy is going to make the difference and that, and that is, we know that we need to re-culture a school system to actually make a difference for all of our children. So I am more than happy to, to sit together and to look at other ways that that information could be embedded in a way that would be more helpful to when we move toward the superintendent evaluation. I did also in the document, put the corresponding state standards, so the superintendent evaluation standards that I think connect to the different areas from each of the standards that people may be interested in. What I did not have time to do, but I'd be happy to go back, because I put the standards and I did not go down to the indicator and element level, and that may be helpful. So I'd be happy to take that suggestion back to and make those stronger connections, in particular to the, the indicators and elements that you're very concerned about.
Rick?
Yeah, I didn't think this was going to work to do the district improvement plan and all the school improvement plans in one night, but this worked great. And I really, I really thought it was so much better to have you all come forward and talk about different pieces of the district improvement plan instead of spend, you know, forty-five minutes on each school improvement plan, which we have and we could just ask questions if we want to. So it really worked great. And I just want to thank all of you so much for working so collaboratively and just giving me such a great feeling that you're all in the same boat. And also people who aren't here, I want to thank for doing that as well. It's just really, the feeling in this room for me is just really great. I'll just be astounded if our kids are doing better, you know, in the years ahead than they are now. So thank you very much. The only, the only suggestion I would have for something to look at is that the plan doesn't really have what I would call end goals in it, like we want to, we want to take this measurement and go from X to Y. And I know you're measuring a lot of things and you mentioned a lot of inside, internal measurements you have, some of them I hadn't heard of before, but if you could just consider coming up with some kind of a document that would, you know, have X number of measurements on it, and I don't, I don't know what they would be, and just be tracking that over time so that we can see how we're doing over time. But other than that, I just, again, want to thank you so much for everything you're doing.
Thank you, Rick. And I think next week, one of the, not next week, in two weeks, when I come to around my goals, some of the goals that I'll be asked to write will be some of these, you know, outcome goals or end goals. But I do think that it's something that we are learning as we are going to become better at using the data that, the training that Rhonda, Ian and Mike are going to, so that can only help us to become more expert in being able to write such goals. I also did want to make sure I just stated for the group that when Kathy mentioned earlier, so you probably were doing this in less formal ways, some of these items our schools have not done and I just have to say, the amount of work that people have put in place, our staff, our faculty and staff, in terms of transition in the past two years has been astounding. So some, we've been in partial movement and some are really new structures and strategies, so.
I just wanted to also say I'm really happy to see column five in here. I'm in the middle of reading Paul Tough's book, How Children Succeed, and a lot of his stuff is in here. I know he's coming to speak here too, so that's fantastic.
And I'll hand that one out too of when the dates are for people.
Kevin?
Thank you, Ken. So I want to echo what Rick said, we're all in this together. This is excellent work and a great effort and it foreshadows the great effort that has to go in the future. I want to echo Shabazz and I understand where he's coming from in terms of explicitly putting out these things, but I also understand the superintendent describing that explicitly putting them out sort of takes it away from it being baked into the cake. I was at the Ron Ferguson talk and I seem to take a lot of, Ron Ferguson's advice has been utilized here of how we can bake stuff into the cake, but we can't miss the issue. And I remember a lot of people at that talk were kind of disappointed because what Ron Ferguson was speaking to was not the issues that the community was hoping would be addressed. And those issues wouldn't be addressed by explicitly putting it in the plan, but those issues are addressed by systemically being able, and this was Ron Ferguson's advice when I asked him personally about his expertise on the subject, to be able to explicitly document systemic cases of things that go wrong in the school system. And to be able to do that requires these goals in one and four, utilizing these data tools. So the question that I have or end goal, like what Rick is describing, is how can we make these various things in our school system that we're recording? How do we make it so that this data sets can be shared among characteristics? That way it doesn't have to be an explicit goal that we have to make sure that we're educating every class, but we can look at the goals across each one of these rubrics that we're measuring and say, look, it's painfully obvious that anybody who makes below twenty thousand dollars a year is doing awful in school and it's not anecdotally evident. It's not just a feeling. It's not just a feeling in the community that people will say, I'm going to disengage with what all of our work is because my anecdotal evidence is, this doesn't work for me. If we can develop this, this yeoman's labor to be able to systemically say, we don't need somebody to anecdotally say there's a problem, we can see it as a problem, and we're all supposed to work together to fix it, then we have organically fixed it. So, what I want to say about that is, the question I want to ask is, it's not in this goal, the question I want to ask is, what are the steps that need to be taken to make the data viable across all of these things? So, I'm talking about the, the data about school discipline, the data about growth and achievement, the data about intervention, who needs it, when, and what happened? If all of that is in the same program, where all of that can be accessed in a big, I'm a comic book guy, cerebral brain, then we can figure, we can put all that stuff together at once.
I have no clue what you're talking about. No, I get the prior stuff to that.
High school students might.
Okay, it's the youth culture. May I?
Please.
So, we do have the capacity around discipline data right now to disaggregate in multiple ways. We do in terms of MCAS data, but we do not have a system that really takes all this information and puts it into a format that's user-friendly that we are able to then hold ourselves accountable. That's what their work of going to the DataWise and also looking at their field trip coming up, I think.
Monday.
Monday, to another district who uses a, is it a web-based product, which will allow us to be able to capture that data and then press a button or two to spit it back out to us so that we can routinely, because part of it is getting the information in user-friendly and to be able to disaggregate, and then part of it is us creating our internal cycles of when are you reviewing the data and in what format? So, that is exactly a large part of what's happening in the Office of Teaching and Learning right now.
Quick follow-up. So, I was very happy to hear that you were willing to have this as part of the rubric of superintendent evaluation. It seems to me like there is much less of an excuse for parents who feel disenfranchised to be disenfranchised if they know that the superintendent is judged based on whether or not the system is working for them and we have a way of measuring that.
And that is, state regulations now require that as of next year, everyone is accountable for measures of student performance. And so, that's part of all of our work. But we're beginning, the administrators, with developing our goals this year for trying it on for size.
The work continues.
Yes, thank you.
Lawrence?
So, first, I want to thank everybody. Excuse me. I know it's been a very long day. Probably your day started at about seven o'clock, so I want to thank you tremendously for the time you've put in. And what I'm most impressed with, with this process is having witnessed in our district and in other districts, seeing school improvement programs set up where it's, it seems like one school is doing something and another school is doing something else, and they're almost operating in their own pod. And I'm really impressed with how well everything seems to be so coordinated. So, I want to thank you. I know this takes a tremendous amount of work on all of your parts, and I think it's fantastic. So, to follow up, actually, the one question I had, that Rick had, that came on early, was under one, under goal area one, just as an example of how you'll measure something. One C?
Yes.
Is by December 2012, all leaders will evaluate the effectiveness? So, what will, what are the standards for that?
So, what we're doing right now is norming the, the tool that we'd like to use. We have been reviewing one tool, which I believe tomorrow, the district instructional leadership team is taking a look at it, teacher collaboration, something rubric. Thank you. Which has a rubric by which you can assess the multiple competencies you'd expect to see within a collaborative team. This may or may not be the best tool for us, but we're starting to be able to quantify what we're seeing in teams and to be able to measure their effectiveness.
Okay, that's excellent.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
I would also like to express my thanks for all the work you've done. I mean, I was exhausted listening to all the work, so I can't even imagine actually doing it all. So, the one comment I have, I don't know if it's so much about the actual plan itself, but, you know, many of the items on here are really multi-year.
Yes.
They're not, it's, it's not a one-year plan. And I also kind of did the same thing to go back into plans from prior years. And one of the things that I think would be really helpful, at least for me as a school committee member, is to kind of see where we are in that plan. And I'll just use one example. The one is the goal area two F, by June 2014, evidence-based academic interventions will be identified and implemented for students identified by universal screening and/or other assessments. Well, I, I know Pelham and, and I'm sure many of the other schools have already implemented MAP testing. There already are some interventions in place, but what I'm sort of struggling to understand is where, where have we been? Where, you know, where have we come versus where are we going farther? And, and so, just, and, and I think a number of these kind of fall into that category of, for us to be able to see the continuum, I think, would just be really helpful because I, I do think it's great work and I do think it, it takes a while. These are, these are not your most, not one-year initiatives. And we're only doing a part of it in this year, but to see the whole picture would be helpful.
That'll be something I have to think about, how to be able to paint that picture because, and not that it can't be done, I think it can be done, but because the, creating a structure for intervention requires multiple, multiple steps over time from the professional development, the routines of coaches and others going in and providing the use of data. It's, it's a highly, so I'm not sure, I have to think through a little bit about, is it just what data we've used in the past? Where are we now? What are we looking toward? Because we are using MAP data now and other internal assessments, but we're not sure where we'll land because we're trying to say what, we have to try some things out and see which data systems or what measures are actually going to be most helpful to us. And we've, you know, I also have had some academic interventions that have been tried in the past, but again, have they been carefully mapped in the past of what's been happening? I would suggest not. And so, we're just starting to really solidify what we're putting in place. So, I have, I guess I'd have to think it through and would be happy to take suggestions about what might be helpful to illustrate where we were, where we are, where we're going.
And maybe we could even do it specifically with Pelham because it's part of the Pelham School Improvement Plan. We could talk about it in relation to last year's plan. That would be, that would be fine.
Sure, that would be fine. But again, I'm more than happy to try to think through it a little bit and I will make sure I make it out to myself.
Thank you.
Thanks, Debbie.
Kevin?
Sure. What an impressive presentation, really, except for the Giants Super Bowl comment. Really, what, what tonight did, I think, for me was, you know, so we've been hearing as a school committee about all these pieces over the last year and a half, two years, and it really just put it all together. So, it was sort of an aha moment for me that I saw the whole picture in a way that I had not before. And I loved the way it was coordinated with the school improvement plans and the district improvement plan. Because what, what I learned or what I saw again was that you have created a framework to support all kids, to intervene for all kids in a way that takes the randomness out of it. And, which to me means that all kids are, as this process moves forward and now, have access to the same best practices, which, which I think is, should be our goal ultimately. And, and I can see very clearly how you're going to do that, which is fantastic. So, and the other thing it makes me think of is that you are all doing all of this heavy lifting, and it really, I think, should inform us as a school committee when we do our job around budget. It makes it much clearer to us where we put our resources. And, and I think that's incredibly helpful to us as a committee to hear this. So, thank you very, very much. And I guess, I mean, some of the questions that I had have been answered. The thing that I worry about and I don't know, and I guess it's my question, is that I worry about time. And, because this is a lot of work and it's a lot of coordination, it's a lot of professional development, and it's a lot of time collaborating. And I know that you use staff meetings and I know that you have some time set aside, but I, I get worried about it because there's still, you know, it needs to be supported and it needs to move forward. So, I guess my question is sort of around time and...
It's, it's our ongoing dilemma to be able to find the time for the adults to actually sit together and have meaningful, deep conversation about their work. In some places, we've become, I think, created opportunities for that to happen, but I think others, we have not quite yet. So, it's a, it's a product of, we're looking at some time in learning studies, we're looking at how we use our day, and we are looking at schedules. So, this will be a conversation over time because the priority is having time for the adults to collaborate, to, to improve their practice because we know this is what's going to make a difference for kids. And also, you know, time for kids to have academic intervention and behavioral interventions. So, we're working, not solved yet, but getting closer. Thank you.
Full disclosure, I grew up watching YA Tittle and Charlie Connolly and Sam Huff on a black and white TV. I've got, I've got blue in my veins. I guess to, to the audience out, out there watching on TV, I hope, I hope the degree to which this evening was truly remarkable is, is really something that you can appreciate and, and process. I think for years, if not decades, this district was a very good to excellent educational facility, but all too often, it was best for the kids who would have been successful without us. What I've heard over the last year and a half, and I think culminated, at least a semi culmination this evening, was the embedded language that is truly inclusive. It's the first time that I've heard kids who are underachieving, kids who are achieving but are anonymous in their achievement, being mentioned in the same breadth as those who are achieving at the highest level. And I, I can't tell you how incredibly important that is to me to hear that. I spent a good part of my career working with youngsters who were not recognized for their academic achievements and I think paid a high price for that. For too long, the district has not paid attention to anonymity, and I think it's beginning to do that. Beginning to recognize that there are differentiated needs amongst all kids. And I have to applaud Maria and also you as her administrative team for working so very, very diligently to create and make operational, which is even harder to do, the structures that will allow youngsters to no longer be anonymous, but to be able to progress to a level that they are truly capable of and maybe even a level higher than they think they're capable of. And that is truly a remarkable achievement. It remains to see how successful you'll be, but you've had an incredibly auspicious beginning and you deserve, I think, the undying support and, and respect of the community, the four communities that are involved. And just one last point, as someone who supports regionalization, and I'll put that out there at, at some risk. I think you have created a set of arguments that are incredibly impressive and compelling for moving forward with regionalization, K through 12, all four towns, and I thank you for that. Thank you.
Thank you all so much. It's the most important work in the world and the most challenging work. So, thank you all. Time to go home, all of you, so you can have a wonderful morning tomorrow, bright and early, greeting those, those students. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Are you entertaining a motion?
Committee, I'm sorry, Trevor?
Are you entertaining a motion to adjourn or?
No, no, we have one more item. One more item that we, well, actually, what do you want? Do you want to just distribute the?
I'm just going to pass out and people can read themselves, and I will reiterate this the next time we meet.
There is one item, there is one item on here I'd like to point out to the committee that I think, I, I would like to stress if I may have just a second.
Of course.
When you get it, in paragraph, one, two, in paragraph four, Paul Tough, the author of How Children Succeed, is, is going to be presenting on November 7th, and I would strongly encourage any and all of you to attend that. He's, it's really an outstanding book.
Could I just add to that one really quickly? So, the school, I think it's a school council, school councils bringing this, Paul Tough, forward, and the five colleges are partnering to make this a reality. He will be joining us during the day, but it will be open to the community. So, I'm going to make it you each.
Thank you, Maria. While Maria's passing that out, I want to entertain a motion to accept gifts.
Thank you.
I make a motion that we accept gifts.
I'm sorry, sorry.
There's two each, I'm sorry. I'm collating.
Go ahead, first.
Thank you.
Yeah, while Maria's passing that out, I will entertain a motion to accept gifts. And there are two gifts, both from Target. Okay, thank you.
I move to accept a gift from Target to the Ford River, to Ford River at the principal's discretion in the amount of $839.95. And a second gift from Target to Crocker Farm at the principal's discretion in the amount of $268.02. Do I have to give you the total?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, so the total, the total of the two is $1,107.97.
Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Entertain a motion for the regional gifts. Trevor?
I make a motion, we accept all regional gifts.
Is there a second?
Make a motion, we accept. All right. From James Inhigibo.
Haddabo.
Inhigibo, a total of $1,500. From Reverend Philip Mitchell, in memory of Barry Higgins, $100. For the middle school, a Target Take Charge of Education, check for $47.50. And from Target for the high school, check for $849.95.
Is there a second?
Second.
Just a quick comment, James Haddabo was recently inducted into the Amherst Sports Hall of Fame, hmm, what, two weekends ago.
He's a football player?
Played for the Patriots.
Played for the Patriots.
And played for the Patriots. What was cut?
Did he win a ring? He didn't win, he wasn't on the team the year they won.
Yes, he was.
He was, he did win a ring. I remember his name.
And just a personal comment on a very, Barry Higgins was a friend and also a very loyal supporter of Amherst Thai Athletics, so he'll be missed. All those in favor of accepting the gifts, say aye. Close nay. Motion's carried. Any other comments on our calendar forthcoming? On the 23rd, we have later start time, which I believe the proposal will be forthcoming.
At the end of this week, yes, absolutely.
And will we be voting on the 23rd? Is that your intention?
Yes, we will. We will have a, a discussion of later start time. The information will be coming out to the committee by the end of this week, so you have a full, full week-ish, a little bit more, to look at the information and then we hope to have a discussion and a vote. We've allotted one hour. We also have an update of Teaching and Learning, which will be a 40-minute presentation that Rhonda mentioned earlier. And we also, I will send out to you on Monday, my plan and my goals for the superintendent evaluation, and then we have 20 minutes allotted. I will ask for feedback, the committee, the three chairs are going to ask. I will ask for feedback, the committee, the three chairs are going to ask for feedback in advance, see if there's anything that needs to be adjusted before we come to the meeting, and hopefully that's, you know, a quick conversation and vote.
So any suggestions?
Please note that this is a six o'clock meeting as well. There's a lot on the agenda, so we need to be prepared. Trevor?
Any suggestions I want to send for self-evaluation I have until Friday? I can send them to you?
Absolutely. No, Friday's great.
Friday, okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other comments or questions about the calendar? Lawrence, no?
No.
The Policy Subcommittee is meeting for the first time in quite a while this coming Monday. Apologize for that, but hopefully we will have some, I don't know if I'll have any for the 23rd, but we are going to try to resume our regular schedule of meetings this coming Monday. And I guess that's about it for updates, I think. Motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Any conversation? Not hearing any? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Amherst?
Yes, I make a motion, I ask for a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor?
All right. Pelham?
Motion to adjourn.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
The three of us.
Good night, folks.
So thank you all for staying a little bit longer. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much.